Welcome and thank you for attending this meeting of the Finance and Performance Policy Committee. My name is Sahira Nas, I am the councillor for the Downer Ward and I'm also Chair for the Finance Committee. Today's meeting is open to the public, there are no items that contain exempt information. The meeting will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and broadcast this meeting. We have received one public question for today's meeting. Please can I request that all mobile telephones and such equipment is switched on to silent mode? There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instructions from Town Hall staff. Assembly point is Tudor Square. For the benefit of the webcast, please can each Finance and Performance Policy Committee member introduce themselves and I'll start with Abdul.
Good afternoon, councillor Abdul Qayyum, councillor Fethbark.
Good afternoon colleagues, councillor Eldad from Manor Cattle.
Councillor Gareth Slater, Saudi.
Hiya, councillor Martin Feps, Green spokesperson for the committee.
Councillor Douglas Johnson, City was, also Chair of Housing.
Councillor Glynis Chapman from Mossborough Ward.
Martin Smith, Dorant Topley.
Councillor Andrew Sangar, Forward Ward, substituting for councillor Mike Levery.
Thank you everybody. Apologies for absence, councillor Mike Levery has sent his apologies, councillor Andy Sangar is attending as his substitute. Item two, exclusions of press and public, there are no items that are exempt. Information, declarations of interest. Are members wish to declare any interest? No, thank you very much. Item number four, minutes of the previous meeting, this is on page one of the supplemental agenda pack. Are members happy to approve of the correct record? Yep, that's fine, thank you. Public questions and petitions, number five. We have one public question today. Item number six, members' questions, there are no member questions for today's meeting. So we can take the public question now and that's from Hilary Smith.
I note that the review of the ethical procurement policy has once again been delayed. There's no explanation for this delay and no clear information about the way in which consultation will take place. When will the review of the ethical procurement policy be completed? How will consultation take place? And in particular, will there be consultation with the groups and individuals who have raised questions and concerns, both at this committee and at full council, about the council's continuing refusal to reduce its links with companies complicit in human rights abuses in Palestine? And will the committee be ensuring that the recommendations by Francesca Albanese's report to the UN Human Rights Council are taken into serious consideration in this review? Two days ago, four-year-old Gazal Abu Zahar was one of 18 people who died of starvation. The youngest known victim yesterday was 35 years old. Francesca's report, The Economy of Genocide, states that maintaining trade with an economy inextricably linked to occupation, apartheid and genocide is complicity. And profiting from genocide is not merely depravity, it is a crime. In 22 months of genocide, this committee and its individual members have not taken a single concrete step towards reducing the complicity of Sheffield council and indirectly its citizens with the economy of genocide. Today, many more will die of starvation and they and their families have no interest in your crocodile tears. They have no interest in your bureaucratic processes that neatly defer agenda items. They have no interest in your assertions that your officers tell you that your hands are tied and that it is not your responsibility. Not one of you has had the courage to publicly challenge the leadership of this council. Not one of you has had the moral integrity to demand that your council takes even the smallest steps towards ending financial links with institutions which supports Israel's practice of apartheid, occupation and genocide. History will judge each one of us for our failure to prevent this genocide. Yesterday, Francesca, the United Nations Special Rapporteur, when referring to the death of a disabled young Palestinian from hunger, said: "Our generation", and that is my generation, "was taught that Nazism represented the ultimate evil. Today, a state, Israel, is deliberately starving millions." Half an hour ago, I met Imad outside the town hall. He's a Palestinian from Gaza, currently living in Sheffield. Yesterday, his two uncles, who have been displaced four times during the genocide, were massacred by Israel, along with five children in the family. When will each of you take action? When will this committee take action? When will the officers of this council decide to be brave and to recommend that councillors can take action? When will each member of this council stand up in full council and say that they are no longer prepared to be complicit with the silence of Sheffield City Council, with its complicity with genocide and end its links, its economic, its cultural and its social links with the genocidal state of Israel? That is my question for you all.
Thank you. Hilary, do you mind just switching off the mic?
Sheffield City Council has been taking steps...
Thank you, Hilary, your question...
...to make steps to at least...
Thank you, Hilary, your question...
...to be complicit and I am ashamed to be a citizen of Sheffield with a council with a...
Thank you, Hilary, you know we can't...
...stand up or take any action...
Thank you, thank you, Hilary, can I, can I respond to Hilary? Hilary, thank you very much.
...that you have not even been prepared to write a letter to Barclays Bank. Can I ask the Chair of the...
Hilary, I will be writing a letter to the Barclays Bank.
...what law prevents you from writing a letter to Barclays Bank?
Right, thank you, thank you, Hilary. Your question came today and we allowed it to, we allowed you to ask the question, you had actually missed the deadline, but it was important that you were able to come and ask your question. A cross-party working group has been working...
...delaying...
Can I, can I respond please? Because if you're going to be shouting back at me, you're not going to hear what I've got to say. A cross-party working group has been working on the ethical procurement policy and the reason it hasn't come yet, because we are trying to make sure that it's the right ethical procurement policy. And as far as consultation goes, I have asked the question. I do believe that the consultation should be with everybody that has come here and asked questions around the ethical procurement policy. It's not gone at consultation yet as, because the draft version has not been completed. But as soon as that is completed, we will send it out for consultation and your feedback will be welcome. But I'm trying to ensure our ethical procurement policy is not just a tick box exercise, that it actually is meaningful. So thank you very much for your questions today. You will get a written response in 14 days. Thank you very much. Okay, so moving on to...
...you should be sitting here, but officers and councillors need to reflect on the answer that the Chair of the Committee has just given. And in what way is that a response to the points that I've just made? In what way is that a response to what...
You'll get a written response, Hilary.
...you will see on your social media feeds every day. In what sense is that a response to what the United Nations Special Rapporteur is saying? In what way are you carrying out your responsibilities? In what way are you acting as citizens of the world in refusing, in refusing to be silenced?
Number seven, which is the work programme, and this is on page 13 of the agenda pack. And Amanda Clayton, are you going to talk us through?
Thanks Chair, I've got no further additions to add, other than what's listed on page 16, where you can see the proposed additions and amendments. I think it's quite well populated, looks like this committee have been organising getting their work programme sorted, so nothing further to add.
Can I, can I also say that we have got a, an away day being planned for us? Is there a date set now? Oh, 30th of July? Okay, so there is a date now, 30th of July, to kind of go away and have a discussion on the work programme and discuss amongst ourselves if we want to add anything more to the work programme. Is there any questions or comments regarding the work? Councillor Dodd?
Thank you, and this would ordinarily be the bit where I ask about the progress on the ethical procurement strategy, but since that point has rather been made in this meeting, I'll save that for some other issues. So I wanted to ask, and there are a couple of things that have come on to our agenda this month that weren't there previously, we didn't, didn't get very much forewarning of them. And so I wanted to ask officers whether they are aware of anything like that, like the investigation that we're considering today, that will be, that is sort of in the medium term pipeline to come to this committee in three to six months' time. Particularly as I'm keen to make sure that where there is public participation or prior member engagement required for those agenda items, that those are planned sufficiently well in advance, that we're not forced to delay or otherwise not discuss items. I've got another question, but I'll leave that one for now.
Thank you, any other questions or comments? No, okay, so on the member away day to work through the work plan will address the concerns that you've picked up. We do want to make sure that items that are quite detailed or sometimes complicated, we have enough time to know that they are coming and they are planned in advance for us to be able to get our head around some of the reports. Okay, thank you very much, this, sorry, yeah, councillor?
Thanks, I mean if officers are in a position to comment on my first question now, that would be helpful. My second question was about the council plan outcomes framework, task and finish group. To far as I know, that task and finish group has finished, but we haven't heard any reporting back to this committee about its work. I'm conscious we're about to enter into this municipal year's cycle of looking at our performance outcomes, but we haven't had an update as to whether any of those indicators have changed as a result of the task and finish group, which was principally the purpose of the task and finish group. So please could we have an item on that in the August meeting of this committee, so that we can look at it before that report comes in September?
Philip, do we, yeah, okay.
Thank you Chair, Claire Taylor, Chief Operating Officer. Just a quick addition for the committee's notice on the forward plan, as we can put some placeholders in particularly for the work that we're doing on the Sheffield Royal Review Programme, HR and equal pay related work. It will be provisional because it's fairly shifting, but we can certainly give you some, some headline timeframes about what to expect when. And we can also arrange the relevant member briefings ahead of that too. Thank you. Thanks Chair.
Philip, do we now got, if James is going to bring back his report?
James, I'll leave it at the moment, I'll double check the progress of a report back from those workshops. We've certainly got an item planned for August to look at the outcomes framework before the quarter one report comes to the committee. Again, we can pick up the timing of that, if that needs to move around when we meet on the 30th to plan whether that briefing is before or after the August committee.
So there's definitely a date for James to come back and have a discussion with us, with all the feedback that we had in the working group and where that fits in now with the indicators. But that is planned, we just don't have a date confirmed for that, but hopefully we'll get that soon. Any other questions or comments on the work programme? Okay, there are some recommendations for approval in this, are we all agreed? Yeah? That's all agreed, thank you very much. Moving on to item number eight, which is on page 23 of the agenda pack, and this is the Sheffield City Council People Strategy. And if officers can introduce themselves before presenting, thank you.
Good afternoon Chair, I'm Jane English, Director of People and Organisational Culture.
I'm George Charlesworth, Head of Learning.
So thank you for the opportunity for myself and my colleague to present the People Strategy today. We are seeking endorsement for the strategy, but also for the agreement to bring the recommended measures within to the outcomes framework. So this will be the first time that there has been a strategy specifically focused on the Sheffield City Council workforce and the role of the people team in facilitating change that's actually been presented. I think it's fair to say when we first started this journey, looking at our people strategy, the people team were not really set up to really support the future challenges of the organisation. We tended to be quite reactive and actually it meant that we didn't really have the opportunity for proper strategic thinking and forward planning. So the People's Strategy aims to build a flexible, skilled and inclusive workforce, aligned and supporting the council plan and also the future Sheffield Transformation Programme. It really emphasises supporting our employees to thrive, embedding people centred principles and adopting, adapting future workforce challenges through strategic leadership, development and wellbeing initiatives. The plan is actually the people team will operate through a strategic people operating model, so that's really business partner driven. So it will combine strategic advisers, centres of excellence and service centres to deliver an efficient, expert and people focused service. We really wanted to look at some of our future challenges as well to help inform the strategy, so things such as technological advancements, democratic shifts and evolving employee expectations around things such as flexibility and wellbeing. And also what that means in terms of the re-skilling inclusive and inclusive culture that we need to develop. The actual strategy has three priority areas. The first is around developing a future ready workforce and leadership, really focusing on learning opportunities, effective recruitment, clear workforce planning, performance accountability and embedding safeguarding and health and safety corporately. The second is around fostering belonging and success through inclusion and wellbeing. So this is really looking at promoting inclusive leadership, emotional and cultural intelligence, employee engagement, transparent communications and ensuring that we create a supportive and diverse workforce. And the third one is around delivering smart, simple and strong people services. This is about having the right efficient people processes and tools in place, about having management toolkits, digital HR tools and streamlining our administrative tasks. And that actually really then specifically addresses some of the issues that have been raised in some of the audits where the P and O C team have had issues around compliance and dealing with issues in a timely manner. Underpinning the strategy, we're currently working on a delivery plan, which ensures we're going to be accountable for turning the strategy into, from an agile document, which underpins organisational success, to one that we actually make sure we deliver. And we will be engaging with our trade unions on its development and embedding in the organisation. Having strategic business partners in place also means we'll have the ability to develop specific people plans to meet organisational needs according to service area. So for instance, the business partners can support workforce planning and development as we change, as we see change in industry sectors, such as what we're seeing within health currently. In terms of the governance, one of the things that's going to underpin our strategy is the development of the Performance and Organisational Culture Steering Group. Within the organisation at the moment, we don't really have anywhere where we can collectively discuss people issues. So I want to bring together people to be able to not only talk about our best practice, about some of the people challenges that we have, but actually how we can work clarity across the organisation to solve those problems, but also to hold us to account to actually deliver the strategy as well. And as you'll see, we'll be reporting to the Corporate Assurance Board and it's proposed the people KPIs to the Finance and Performance Committee are done quarterly. Lastly, whilst the People's Strategy is an internally focused initiative, it's written to support the external facing programmes within future Sheffield, such as customer experience and the digital transformation. By really prioritising workforce development, the strategy ensures that employees are equipped with the necessary skills and knowledge to adapt to an evolving technological landscape and customer expectations. A really great example of that is the digital adoption team that's within Joe's team, that's going to specifically be there to support the digital and IT strategy delivery. And just to bring you to the workforce measures, so we have six measures initially in place and you'll see that there is a number that we're also looking at for the future. And what we have also made sure we do, we've done is to make sure all of those six measures actually cover at least one of the areas of the strategy. So each one is covered by a performance measure. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Councillor Slater?
Hiya, I guess my question was on the third of those points, you're saying you want to try and make sure you've got a diverse workforce. How do you know if you do or you don't? Because I'm just looking at this, so say for example disability, I believe the national average is round about 20%, same for city average. So looking at this, I would say we're not actively getting 25% of the possible disabled workforce that we could get. So how do we, how do we know that we've actually got a diverse workforce or not?
So one of the things that we've actually done is introduce a brand new team within the people and organisational culture team. So we've developed an employee engagement, inclusion and wellbeing team. And that team is specifically focused on our internal inclusion activity. And one of the key things is actually understanding our baseline, but actually then saying as an organisation, what, what should we be aspiring to? And making sure that we understand that only the local demographics, but also what is right for our organisation. One of the things that actually underpins our whole strategy is data. And the way I describe kind of how we have our people data at the moment is, we're kind of data rich, but sometimes intelligence poor. So it's actually how do we really get smarter with our data? So we really start to understand what we're measuring, but also our trends as well. So there's two parts to my organisation that will specifically look at that. That is my people systems team, but also my employee engagement team, which we've developed specifically to look at inclusion within the organisation.
Councillor Smith?
Thank you Chair, just building on what Gareth said. If I look at the success, I think you've got 24 success factors down there, the vast majority of them appear to be qualitative, qualitative rather than quantitative. So how will you know at the end? Or how would you track those successes, whether you're being successful or not, given that most of them are really difficult to put numbers to? Thank you.
So one of the things that is a challenge is actually what's your benchmark? And that's the one thing that we're really working with other colleagues within not only our sister kind of councils, but also other core cities around, what is the right relevant benchmark data that we've got to work with? But also making sure that we are ensuring that what we are benchmarking is the same as what others benchmark as well. For me, these are our initial workforce measures. And you know, this is the first time we've really had a set of workforce measures that we want to include within the overall corporate measures. And I do see them developing. So these are what we think should be the first ones. You will see as we keep presenting every quarter, how we are going to keep reinforcing and reinventing what that looks like.
Thank you, can, did you want to come back?
Not this time, maybe next time when it comes back, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Sangar?
Yes, thank, thank you Chair. It's interesting reading, but I'm left more confused after reading it than I was before I started. It's simpler like human, the actual people strategy just seemed to lack human input. It was all, it reads, I don't mean this disrespectfully, it reads like an AI generated report. And I know the report says we need to all make more use of AI, just hoping that we weren't jumping ahead of ourselves on that. I think my question really, problem from councillor Smith's, is, is understanding what, what is our baseline in terms of these six measurements? And what are we trying to, where are we trying to get to them? Because I've not been on this committee much, but I have been on the council when we had HR committees and personnel committees and we had lots of people targets and we've measured many of these things over the years. So we have baselines and we do compare ourselves with the course, other core city councils. And I don't get the impression from reading this report of where we sit now, where we want to be in three years, we want to be in 10 years. And I know that public sector is about to go through a lot of changes. I know, you know, we've had this information, technology revolution, and we're now having this AI revolution. And I don't see where we're going to be in 10 years. I'm not going to be around the stable in 10 years' time, but I just want to know how the council's people strategy in 10 years' time will be different to how the council's people strategy was 20, 30 years ago. And I don't get that, I just get lots of warm words and very sensible suggestions and I just, it doesn't grab me this report. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. I would like to give you assurance, this is absolutely not generated by AI. It's been through very, very many human iterations to kind of get us to this, this kind of point today, so I would like to give you that assurance. I also share in terms of, you know, the information that we have, I've been here 18 months and I don't believe we've done a lot of benchmarking with other organisations and other councils, we haven't done that enough. And that's really one of the things why we have to start kind of saying, what is our benchmark? Where are we starting from? There hasn't been those conversations since I've been there and they're the ones we have to start saying. Because actually, you know, what is our baseline? What is our target? You know, if you kind of say, what is the target for sickness and turnover at the moment, you will get absolutely no consistent answer within the council and it's absolutely critical for our people management, but also for our line managers, to really have the right data in place to be able to have that conversation, because they don't have it at the moment.
Thank you Chair. I mean, I'm very surprised, I mean, this is going back a long, long time. So going back to 99, 2000, when I was Chair in CJC, you know, every quarter we would have the sickness figures, the absence figures by department. And that was 25 years ago, when our IT was frankly not very good. So I know the figures you've got now are a lot, lot better. So I know on sickness, absence for example, I know you'll be much better. I know in terms of councillor Slater's point about adapting to disabilities, I know the council is a lot better than we were 25 years ago. I know on lots of things, I'm sure it's the same in terms of the work on gender, in terms of making sure that, you know, the equal pay, that we've seen the mess that Birmingham City Council got into, we know the problems. So I know on a whole lot of the things, if we measure ourselves now compared with 25 years ago, we're a lot better. I don't get that from this report. I don't get all the strengths of the council, all the great things the council has done over the past quarter or century. I don't, that doesn't jump out from this report at me and it should do, because the council does treat its employees better than it did 25, 30 years ago. I have no doubt about that. I just want this report to say that.
So, you know, I don't have that history myself. I do work with a lot of colleagues who do have that history and would concur in terms of some of the strides that we've taken in terms of people management and leadership within the organisation. You know, without a doubt, it's different between, you know, now and then. I think the reality is that we just don't use our data as we should do. So for instance, we don't do that kind of people presentation to CJC on a quarterly basis, you know, is it something we should be doing? Yes, it probably is, because that's an ideal forum where we have both members, but also our trade unions there as well. So as I say, we have lots of data within the organisation, we just don't use it smartly enough and we don't use it well enough to make our data informed decisions.
Thank you. Councillor Dodd?
Thank you Chair, and thanks to you for bringing this, it's really brilliant to see progress on it. Our people are clearly one of our strongest assets as a council and so having a strong people strategy is a really important part of our ability to deliver everything in the council plan, but also to go about with the kind of cultural transformation that we're embarking on and becoming the council that we need to be in the future, recognising, as colleagues have said, that we've already come a long way from, from the past. And I recognise that this is the first time we've had a strategy like this, so it's kind of necessarily a little bit work in progress. And I think it's great to see the emphasis that you've put on technology and the way that we want to support our people to keep pace with evolutions in technology, the emphasis on wellbeing... And the emphasis on wellbeing and inclusion is really to be welcomed and the important role of leadership in mobilising change. I thought all of those were really great. And there were a few areas that it feels like, to me, like there's something still lacking. And I suppose it's our role in part to make sure that these tier-two strategies are really doing all that they can to drive progress across the whole range of strategies that the council is looking at. And so it's within, with that in mind, I suppose that I'm thinking about, I suppose my question is, can you assure me that these things are being taken into account in the strategy even if they don't read like they are to me? And so the four things that I'm thinking about, I suppose, come as kind of drivers of the future workforce need and so underpin quite a lot of what's in there. The first one is about prevention. And colleagues will recall that in the budget in the council in May, we said that all of our future spending should be driven towards thinking about prevention as an important part of making sure that we get ahead of the curve and that we're not just responding to bad things when they happen, but that in our services, we're helping people to not need to come to the council or to others as often as possible. And my understanding of that way of working is it's conceptually quite different to responding to a demand-driven kind of way of working. And so I'm wondering what we're doing to support our workforce to shift from being much more demand-driven to being much more preventative in all that it does. My second question is around devolution and the kind of shift that we're seeing towards place-based leadership. This feels like quite an organisational document and there's lots of good reason for that. But we know that in almost everything that we do, there are other public services in the city as well as voluntary sector organisations and others who are also a part of us delivering the things that we want to achieve. And some of the role we're expected to play as the kind of principal place-based organisation in the city is to mobilise change through and with others. And so particularly, I mean, at all levels, but I think particularly when we're thinking about service leadership, how are we thinking about the skills that our staff need to be not just delivering in their own hierarchy, but delivering for Sheffield as a whole place? My third thought is about inclusion and equity. I think we've done really good work in this to talk about wellbeing and inclusion for our staff. But I wasn't seeing very much about how we ensure our staff are equipped to think about wellbeing and equity when they work with residents. And there were recommendations in the Racial Equality Commission, for example, but other places too, about how do we ensure that we embed like genuinely thinking about equity in the way that we work with residents and with communities? And then my fourth thought actually came as part of reading a subsequent item on today's agenda pack, which is that there's understandably quite a high degree of focus on compliance within this, that we should be following the law and following our own guidelines. And that's of course really important. But some of the recommendations we've received later on in the agenda are about a culture of challenge and about not just doing what you're told always if you don't think that that's the right thing to be doing. And so I wondered how are we embedding that culture of challenge also in our, the workforce that we want for the future? Thanks.
So I'll pick up on three of those and I think I'll ask my colleague Jo just coming on a particular leadership one. So in terms of the kind of preventative, and that's really around that proactivity and around that partnership working. So one of the things we can really make sure we can do is feed that into, we're just about, we're starting our journey in developing a leadership behavioural framework. So actually, you know, really outlining what it means to be a senior leader and middle within our organisation. And that's one of the areas we can really make sure we focus on within that framework to make sure we have that, not only the competency, but the behaviours needed to drive that kind of partnership working. So really great to kind of highlight that because that's certainly something that Jo and I can take away and make sure we really do feed into that work. In terms of the wellbeing and quite rightly, this is an internal document, but you're right, how do you then take that to actually, you know, ensure that our employees live those values in terms of with our customers as well? And this is really where the people strategy kind of interweaves with the kind of future Sheffield and the other strategies. So for instance, that very much is weaved into the customer experience strategy. And again, it's something that Jo's team will support the organisation to be able to deliver in terms of the upskilling according to the kind of the new customer experience strategy. And the thing around compliance, and you're right, probably, you know, the third of one of the strands is really around focusing on the people team and compliance and better processes and actually, you know, making it a much easier environment for our people to be able to access guidance and documents. And that really is as a reaction to not only some of the things that we've seen where compliance has not been great, but also the amount of times where things get caught in systems and process because they're not streamlined, they're not easy to access. But actually, that kind of, that challenge culture will very much not only come from the work that Jo's going to be doing from a leadership perspective, but also from that leadership behavioural framework where there is clear expectations about not only what you do as a leader within the organisation, but just as importantly, how you do it. Jo, can I just get you to pick up on the leadership one, please?
Yeah, sure. So we have shifted in terms of the way that we work for development in the organisation from a very much menu-based, order-taking service to a much more strategic-aligned one. And that's something that's happened over the last couple of years. So we look at what the organisational priorities are and then create the learning that runs alongside those. So we don't do a sheep-dip leadership development programme. Recently, we've had, seen our executive management team have their development programme. We've had our directors now starting to look at what heads of service require. Alongside that, as Jane mentioned, we've got the behaviours framework that will be developed. And once that's developed for senior managers, senior leaders in the organisation, we'll look at how leadership runs right through the organisation, because everybody's got a part to play in that, whether you're school crossing patrol or whether you're at Clare. So it's making sure that that's right across. The other thing that we're doing is looking at a skills framework. So it is something that we're lacking. It runs alongside the role review programme, looking at the roles that we've got, the skills that we need now and the skills that we're going to need in five, 10 years' time in the organisation to make sure that we've got that forward plan. So whilst I can't say to you right now, here's the plan for what we're going to do in, you know, this is the management development programme, that's because I'm wanting to keep it fluid, make sure it is led by sort of the organisation requirements. One of the things we've done recently is the multiverse apprenticeships, which are throughout the organisation around that, looking at that data. And we've got ranges of people doing that, we've not kept that to lower-level staff, that's open to all staff, we've got some, you know, quite senior people doing that as well. So it's looking at organisational priority and how we address that rather than individual groups of staff. Does that help?
I think Claire Taylor wanted to come in as well.
Thank you. Couple of other additional reflections, if I may. So I think it's important that this document's read alongside some of the other workforce plans that we have as well. So for example, there's a workforce development strategy for adult social care, for example. So it's important that it's seen as part of that knitted-together framework. What's not mentioned in here, but possibly could be actually, as we've been talking about it in committee, is the work that we're starting to do with Sheffield Stronger Together system leaders. And at the moment, colleagues in the policy team are exploring systems leadership for that kind of place-based approach. Think with regards to the demand-driven, shifting from a demand-driven mindset to a prevention mindset as well. We, one of the things that I think we're getting a lot better at in Future Sheffield is thinking as we're writing strategies and thinking about service design, thinking about what workforce implications of those are. So the digital strategy is a couple of years ahead, so it's a really good example which we can point to, whereas, right, it's a really clear platform or theme within that strategy and these are all the things that are happening with workforce. I think we'll need to make sure we do the same when we bring the community strategy to, and the commissioning work to members, because that's the space and the place where we need to make sure that our workforce skills and competencies are aligned with the kind of strategic outcomes of that report. And the leadership for that is, from a programme perspective, Catherine, who's in the room from a Future Sheffield, but Meredith and Matt as the leads around commissioning adults and children's services, and Greg, of course. So that's where that's embedded. And the last thing that I just wanted to, two last things I wanted to draw to the committee's attention. There is a separate A Qualities Diversity and Inclusion Action Plan that has leadership, workforce, overlaps a little bit with this, engagement and service design within it. So that's the, that's the external piece and that sits within the remit of Strategy and Resources Committee. And one of the other things I think's really interesting, and I haven't caught up with this yet, but I know last week we had an inaugural cross-council working group around the future of work and what good work looks like with emerging technology. And that's also part of the thinking that we're doing around Future Sheffield. And the thing I'd say about that is that also came up in the Strategy and Resources Committee kind of Policy Day as well. So it's another one of those policy development areas that members might like to get involved in in due course. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Dodd, did you want to come back? Or shall I move on?
Bye, Mr.
Councillor Douglas?
Thanks. I just wanted to go to the bottom of some of the criticisms of the lack of quantitative approach and the baselines. Councillor Smith referred to the fact that the reports didn't seem to have anything quantitative in. And I think in contrast, Councillor Sanger said that we already had baselines that... Looking at the papers, pages 31 to 33 contain the list of the workforce performance measures. And I'm just going to get to the bottom of this. It seems to me that each of these six measures is aiming at precisely a quantitative measure of something, which I hope will be reported back to this committee. So for instance, first one is measuring the total pay bill based on the establishment and costs incurred on our strategic temporary workforce provider. So that's a specific quantitative thing, it seems to me. But it also says on there that the target is to be confirmed once the baseline is established, which implies to me that the baseline is not yet established. And I just want to check that I'm not barking up the wrong tree. I mean, we are talking here about adopting some quantitative measures, aren't we? Is that right, first of all? Can you just expand on that?
Yes, I would like to be in a place where actually for all of these measures, you have a really clear target for each one of them, that we can establish a comparator, but also there is a, there is a kind of quantitative as to why are we doing this as well? So you kind of have a balance of the two. We don't have all of the quantitative at the moment, but the aim is, yes, we absolutely will do. Yes.
Okay, thanks. If so, that's really welcome because I agree with Councillor Sanger that conditions have probably improved in the sense of how much people want to work in the council if you look at how things have changed over the last 25 years. And frankly, there is a lot of positivity in the council now, but it's not uniform. And I know from my experience of those cases when I have been involved in, you know, personal disciplinary and grievance cases, they're not uniformly spreading across the council and there's some things that for some reason seem to disproportionately involve BME staff. And that suggests that something isn't right. So I'd very welcome, very much welcome, any progress at all to try and eliminate that. And it seems to me that there's always a starting point of just establishing what our baselines are. If we haven't, I think you said that we think we do have the data, but we don't have the intelligence from it, which is kind of the important bit. And given one of the things to measure here is sickness absence, you know, that seems to be always an incredibly important indicator for any good employer. So yeah, from my point of view, the sooner this is done, the better. And then we might need to look at what the gaps are. What I did want to ask about is that where's referenced here the targets, we said, once the baseline's established? What's the sort of timescale for when you'd expect that we could establish a baseline such that we could bring it back? And then what's the process? Is that something for officers to set or officers to recommend to this committee? Do we get to say what the baseline should be, you know, on the right advice? Or, so what and when, really?
So the aim is that we bring our first report with Q1 and we hope by then that we will be able to establish our baseline. There may be one of them particularly around the agency costs and the establishment costs that we may still be working on, but we'll be very open and transparent if we haven't been able to get that to a baseline. So we're aiming to bring them back for the first ones for Q1 this year.
Right. So just thinking in terms of what the committee might want to ask for, so Q1, so April next year, and whether we need an interim report, just something. But maybe I'll just park that for the rest of the committee to think about.
When is it?
Yeah. Oh, sorry, Q1 being?
September.
September.
Yes.
Unispo Q1.
Unispo Q1.
That's not a Q1 in, anyway, right, September, just say September then, okay.
Councillor Phipps?
That's Douglas. Thank you, Chair. Thanks for the report. I was just reflecting on measure five, good engagement with our employees on page 32. I'm just wondering, can we ensure and are we enabling honest feedback on this? So kind of what I mean by that is sometimes in organisations, these surveys get sent around, but then there's some incentive or some reason that employees should basically always say, yes, the company I work at is the best company ever. And that's probably more common than people realise. So yeah, I think it's really important to re-enable honest feedback from that. And also just inside, kind of talking about the targets, Douglas mentioned, like who should set them, et cetera. I'm just reflecting, so it says that the benchmark is six and a half. I presume all of these scores are out of 10. And the target is seven for us. I don't know, part of me wonders if seven is a little bit low. If, I don't know, as an employee at an organisation, when you're kind of giving that kind of feedback, eight, nine and 10 is kind of the, this is good, isn't it? I think, I don't know, you'll probably be able to speak back to me better. But from my understanding and like collecting responses, that those are kind of considered that this is good feedback response and kind of below that is kind of a bit of a question mark. So should we be looking at a slightly higher target than seven out of 10? Maybe eight?
Thank you for that. We've just conducted our survey, so we're just in the process of collating all those results. It's administered by an external organisation, so completely anonymous. I will say that, you know, we also get written feedback as well and our employees don't hold back. You know, it is, there is some very open and some very honest feedback in there and we'll be doing that analysis over the next couple of months to be able to be able to feed back to the organisation. In terms of the targets, they come from our survey provider, so they're a completely independent survey provider, who provides surveys across a number of both public and private services as well. And so they've given us the kind of government engagement index of 6.5 as the average, really. And they've really said, actually, you know, for a challenge for a local government is around the seven, but of course we will keep challenging ourselves. I think, you know, the honesty is, is that actually to move an engagement survey opinion by a significant amount is incredibly difficult over a short period of time. It is incremental improvements that you actually want to keep seeing. I would love to see an eight or a nine. I can, I would absolutely love to see that, but it will be incremental.
Thank you. I've got a question as well, so I'll just, you know, when I was reading your report, Jane, I think it's really important that we're explicit when it comes to race equality because we know from national and local data that racial disparity persists, especially recruitment, promotion and senior leadership. So it'd be helpful to understand whether there are plans to track progress for Black, Asian and other racially歧视ised staff and whether the action plan could include some clear measurable outcomes around that. And I'm not saying this as a criticism, but to ensure that our strategy reflects Sheffield's population and our commitment to fairness. There's no actions or commitments around racial equity or anti-racism. So if you can just respond to that, please, thank you.
Absolutely. So workforce planning, the actual traction strategies that we have for our organisation are built into the strategy, but where you will actually see those day-to-day actions in terms of what we're actually going to do will be in our action plan. And I'm more than happy to bring that action plan back to committee once we're in that place where we've got that, just to give you the confidence that those kind of issues and some of the issues I think that Councillor Dodd has also brought up are actually covered in the deliverables of the strategy.
Councillor Dodd?
Thanks. And I was just reflecting on the really helpful responses that several colleagues gave to my previous questions and to the richness of this conversation more broadly in many ways and regretting that we weren't able to have a knowledge briefing and have this kind of vigorous conversation to inform the paper that you've brought today, because I think colleagues from across the parties have brought useful... I think colleagues from across the parties have brought useful inputs that would have strengthened what was in front of us today. And I suppose I'm wondering if we're placing too much emphasis on the leadership framework? It sounded like that was quite, that was an answer to quite a few of the things that are coming through, and I'm a big believer that that's important. But I would encourage officers to think about whether there are other levers that we can be pulling, particularly where, yeah, where we're trying to see kind of embedded cultural change across the whole organisation. I also had some specific comments on the proposed metrics, some of which have been picked up by other colleagues already. But I was wondering, and it maybe Philip or others can answer, the idea that we're setting ourselves a target of something being in budget as progress, as the metric one was, feels out of kilter with the kind of outcome nature of some of the other targets that we've got in our performance outcome framework. I afraid I don't have a great idea for what an alternative is, but I'm assuming that the question here is, do the people we have meet the things that we need? And therefore we're not needing so many agency staff or whatever. But I just wondered if we were sort of measuring the right thing by just asking ourselves whether it's within budget. My second question was on the ride or reporting. I had a question that may be similar to kind of councillor Phipps's instinct. If we set ourselves a target of getting zero bad reports, for want of a technical term, from ride or, there's a sort of perverse incentive to not give them full information or not report things to them so regularly, I wondered if we want to be thinking about that metric as a fraction? How many reports did we make? And out of them, how many did we get back bad feedback? So that we're not discouraging ourselves from being as open and transparent in reporting that kind of stuff as we could possibly be? And then finally, there didn't seem to be any of the metrics about skills development. And in your responses, you've all really emphasised the important role of talent and learning and development, but we don't seem to measure or capture that in any way. And so I wondered if that's something that we want to be holding ourselves to account for as well, as difficult as it obviously is to measure someone's skills, but presumably there are some things that we have to do that. Thanks.
In terms of the reporting one, sorry, was that in regard to the safety measure?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, so the health and safety executive can come into our organisation at any time. So it's not just when we submit a report, they can really just turn up at any time. And what this wants to acknowledge is the fact that, you know, if, for whatever reason, you have a health and safety body who approaches your organisation and, you know, and we go through a process to work through the issue, that actually what comes from that is zero prosecutions, no improvement notices and no fees for intervention. So it is that acknowledgement that there will always be times when there are things you need to report to an external body, but it is what happens. And the prelude to that is actually you've got the right systems in place, you've got the right training in place, you've had the right briefings, that the employee knew what they were doing, their job description was up, all that kind of thing, that you have that in place already. So actually, the health and safety body or the safety body walks away and says, actually, we are confident about the response you've given to us. That's why we've done it, is that kind of measure. So it's not about reporting and kind of curbing that reporting culture. It's about the fact we have everything in place, that when the health and safety executive, for instance, does come into us, we get none of those outcomes. In terms of the skills development, do you want to just pick that up in terms of skills framework?
Yeah, so at the moment, we don't have a skills framework, we don't know what skills we've got and what skills we haven't got in the organisation. So the skills framework will allow people to self-measure, but the data will come to my team, so we'll be able to see, you know, we've got excellent quantity of problem solving over there, but there's a massive gap over there, so it'll help us identify where we need to put the investment. It'll also enable people to create their own learning pathways, so that they can design their own pathways to the kind of learning they want to do, rather than the stuff that we force upon them. So the other thing would be is, once we've sort of got that data and can tell what we've been looking at is, you know, is there, are they struggling over there to manage their financials? Are they struggling over there to manage their people? Where's the correlation of that? So we can use all of that data so we know where to put our investment in terms of developing those skills frameworks. And then that will give us the opportunity to be able to come here to tell you, this is our skills framework, this is where we've got strengths, this is where we need to develop, this is what we're going to do about it, and then come back to the quarters afterwards and say, this is how it shifted, this is the impact of it, and really be able to evaluate that, you know, that input from us and from employees.
Sorry, yes, Philip may want to come in on this one as well. So I think there's twofold for this one, but it is mainly around management accountability. So actually, as a manager, you have a budget which covers your establishment. And actually, I think it's, you know, as an organisation, we need to be able to hold our managers to account, that they can actually manage the resources that they have within the budget that they have. And whether that be your establishment, whether it be managing your vacancies or managing your agency spend as well. We want to look at it from that kind of holistic point of view of managing your resources to meet the service output. Philip, I don't know if there's anything else you want to just pick up from that one?
I think the only thing I'd add is, we have been doing a substantial piece of work to make sure that we understand what our establishment is. So what people do we have in post? And does that match our budget? And making sure that the information we have in our finance system matches the information that we have in the HR system. So there's been a huge piece of work to tie those two sets of data together, and then have a process in place by which if one of those sources of information is updated, it reflects back in the other system, so that we have a consistent basis where HR and finance colleagues both have a consistent understanding of what our establishment is. And then service managers will also have that consistent understanding and can match the establishment teams to the budget that they have available. We haven't had that, and that's been a big gap that we've sought to fix.
councillor Smith.
Thank you. Just wondering if you could clarify the jargon in the last bit? You said, we don't know the establishment we've got. Does that mean the council doesn't know how many people it employs? Just to double check.
So we know how many people we employ. The way the HR system's been set up is probably maybe different from how you would normally set it up, in that you would have a post number for every post that exists and a budget that's assigned to that post, so that you know that if you have a post that you're recruiting to, you have a budget available. The way our current system has been set up was, in the HR system, the individual sort of existed in the system, but the post didn't. And that made it really difficult to track whether an actual post had a budget. What we've done is now stitch those two things back together. So if there is a post and there is a budget, it's sort of slightly relevant, the person that sits in that post. So we know effectively the number of seats we've got available would be our establishment. And that's, we know what budget we've got available, for the number of seats we've got available, doesn't matter too much who's in those seats in some respects, but we know the number of seats we've got available, and that's our establishment.
So can I just double check? Because, so we know the number of seats, do we know the number of people actually sitting in the seat? Okay. Just wanted to double, double check that.
We absolutely know who we employ. We don't always know if they've got a built-in base budget that's sustainable in the long term. So what you can get is a perfect headcount and understand who we employ, where they live, how much they get paid, but it doesn't always tie back to a clear vacancy or a clear post, which is funded in the long term in the base budget.
Thank you, Claire, that's really useful. councillor Sangha?
Yeah, I'll continue to pursue that point. I mean, clearly, we have a number of departments which are not funded in the base budget. We know that, they're funded in terms of finding capital work and delivering those projects. Similarly, we know when we agree the budget, we know which areas are going out for agency work. I disagree with councillor Dodd that I don't think measure one is capturing all of that in a way that says, compared with the other core cities, we are here and we're making this progress. And I'm still a little concerned, because from a member's perspective, I don't know where we get that monitoring of agency spend. I mean, we've particularly seen it in adult health, but it's not the only area where members' understanding of agency spend and understanding where the policy decisions are, where that comes in. And we end up being very reactive. We see the figures six, nine, twelve months later, and we think, well, we gave you a different policy, we told you to prevent it X number of years ago, and here you are, you're still coming back with next year's budget saying we need to do this agency spend. I'm not sure how we capture that with something like measure one. Thanks, Chair.
So one of the key pieces of work we've actually started already is around our agency spend, and it comes into the bigger piece of strategic workforce planning, because that's a glaring error that we have at the moment. And you're right, we're very reactive at the moment, and very reactive to change. So instead of having that strategic outlook in terms of managing our workforce and whether that is a temporary workforce, whether that's a permanent, whether it's an agency, we don't have a view on that at the moment. We know who the people are, but we don't have a longer term view on, is it the right structure, is it the right people and the right posts at the moment? And that's why I want to introduce that strategic workforce planning within to the people team, because we just don't have that at the moment.
Okay, so councillor Dodd.
Thanks. I suppose I'm just continuing to reflect on the kind of vibrancy of this conversation. And I'm curious, is there a timeliness question to when we approve this strategy? Do you need us to sign it off today? Because I'm hearing quite a lot of different comments about both the content of the strategy and the metrics that feel like, since this is the first time we've ever had one of these, it would be good if we were in a position to be signing off something that was kind of wholeheartedly endorsed and celebrated by everyone all at once. And I'm wondering if there's merit in us giving that another month to make sure that we're coming up with something, but I don't want to do that if that's going to create huge problems for officers.
So there is not an urgency, urgency to this. We are starting to do some of the structural work in the background and our thinking around that. You know, if we were to bring it back in a month or two months, I'm happy to kind of come and have those individual conversations as well, if anyone, you know, if there's any particular issues you want to pick up. You know, I really want to be in a place where we have a people's strategy that's endorsed by the committee, and that actually the measures are agreed to go into the reporting. It may just throw back the reporting from Q, from September to, what I would call Q2. That's probably the one thing that would set it back.
In that case, Chair, if I may, then I might propose that we do that and we ask the team to come back to us in, is it the August or the September meeting, recognising the implications that that would have on the reporting that's coming forward for this. I think it would be particularly helpful, and I'm mindful of Claire's comments, that there are lots of other strategies that sit alongside this. And I certainly don't feel like I can see this alongside them. Some of them haven't come to our committee, but we haven't had the opportunity to kind of have this briefed to us and be sort of seized of how these bits fit together. And I think I particularly would like the kind of assurance of the, particularly the areas that we've raised as feeling like they might need a bit more work or some answers. How are they picked up in other places? Can we see how that all fits together, you know, recognising that officers will have put a lot of work into this, particularly on the customer experience and all of that kind of thing? But just knowing how the different strategies sit together would be very helpful. So if I can make that proposal, thanks.
Thank you, councillor Dodd. And thank you for bringing this report to us today. I think the people's strategy absolutely recognises where we need to be and where we need to improve from leadership development and outdated processes to the need to be more inclusive, skilled and agile workforce. And it doesn't shy away from the scale of challenge ahead. So I welcome that honest, ambitious and approach to developing a future-ready workforce and leadership, embedding a culture where people can belong, thrive and succeed. But I do agree with comments that were made, and it's been an excellent conversation around the room today. And I think councillor Dodd has made an amendment to this. I agree that I do think that there's lots of other strategies that Claire Taylor mentioned, you know, and at the moment, it feels like the people's strategy is not talking to all the other strategies, you know. So we've got the community strategy, the commissioning, the workforce, adult strategy, Sheffield Stronger Together, lots of other strategies in place, and it just feels like they're not talking. I agree with comments that were made around being able to have a baseline and benchmarking. So even though it's, this strategy is absolutely in the right direction, absolutely needed, I really appreciate all the work that's gone into it, there are some gaps. And I think, if, depending on how people work today, so the recommendation, the amendment from councillor Dodd is that we delay it for another month or two, which means that you may have to report back in quarter two. Do we have a second for councillor Dodd's, councillor Slater's second there? Can I ask, so obviously now we have to vote on this? So. Okay, so. September, for it to come back in September. We'd taken on board all the comments that were made today, and it's, I did request, and I keep asking if we have knowledge briefings before committee meetings so all finance members can have conversations and discussions on reports. Again, unfortunately, that didn't happen for this particular report. So there has been an amendment made. And can I ask if members, so put your hands up, so if you're voting for the amendment made by councillor Dodd? Okay, so that's unanimous. So if that's okay, if you bring the report back in September, we'll just postpone it for now, and we'll bear in mind that you'll be reporting back in Q, quarter two for now. Yeah?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Chair, and thank you for all your comments, councillors. Thank you.
Thank you for you and all the team. Thank you very much. Okay, so.
Just a procedural thing. Given we did want to make sure we don't lose sight of it, do we want to make a specific recommendation to add this to the work plan for September? Just so that we have notes.
We could do that, yeah, absolutely. We'll add it to the work plan for September. Thank you very much. Okay, so we are moving on to item number nine, the VWV investigation and the management response. This is on page forty-nine of the agenda pack. And if officers can introduce themselves before they present this report. But before officers begin the presentation, I just wanted to say a few things. So before we begin discussing the report formally, I want to acknowledge the seriousness of what we are about to consider. This investigation lays a difficult and painful chapter in the council's recent history. It confirms what many residents have long felt that during the street treat dispute, mistakes were made that had a lasting impact on individuals and trust in this council. The way legal action was taken and how complaints were handled did not meet the standards the public rightly expect from public bodies. As Chair of the Finance Committee, I recognise that this is not just about historic decisions, it's also about how we manage risk, ensure oversight and build a culture of transparency and accountability moving forward. The reputational, financial and human costs of poor decision-making is clear. This report makes it clear and plain that simply apologising is not enough. The apology must be sincere, personal and followed by meaningful change. I want to also express my appreciation to the complainants who pursued this issue with courage and persistence, and to the investigators for their clear and frank finding. It is now on us, as councillors, officers and leaders, to show how we listened, understood and are committed to doing better. I welcome the recommendations in the report, but we believe, but I believe we must now have a serious discussion about how we implement them in a way that strengthens this council's and rebuilds public confidence. Over to you, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Hopefully you can all hear me well enough. And so my name's Claire.
And so, my name's Claire Taylor, I'm the Chief Operating Officer. I'm here today to present the management response to the complaint and as it's set out in the papers. And my role is as the owner of the complaint, so I own the action plan and the response to the complaint. You'll know that we don't normally bring management responses and action plans to committee, but given, as councillor Nas, the Chair of the Committee, set out, given the impact, the profile of this issue, we thought it was really important that it came to this committee. It relates to the Sheffield Streets Ahead Programme and the Street Tree Inquiry, so it's really about ensuring that level of transparency. And it's an external investigation, so it's led by VWV, a law firm, and I should be really specific in the paper, I have accepted all of the recommendations that they've made, the reflections and observations that are set out in the report too. A couple of other bits that I wanted to say, just to be clear about the scope of the report. So, as I said, it responds directly to the VWV investigation undertaken. That's the four formal complaints that we may have from Sheffield residents and that's in relation to the legal strategy that the City Council pursued and the action we took with regards to always clearly legal campaigning and protest activity. So whilst this report relates directly to the complaints made by those four residents, there are further nine Sheffield citizens who also made undertakings as part of this work. It would be appropriate and fair and right of me to just highlight that for the committee and recognise that the process of apology-making will need to apply to those further nine Sheffield citizens and the lessons from this report and the recommendations will no doubt be of direct interest for them too, even though they didn't make a formal complaint that was investigatable in the scope of that. Hopefully, hopefully that makes sense. So, just a couple of additional reflections from me. So, the actions in this report, I've set out an action plan and they relate mainly to legal services and that reflects the scope and the review and the nature of the investigation. So it falls very clearly within the remit of Finance and Performance Committee, so that's why we're asking you to have oversight of the action plan today. I think it's important also to recognise that complaints are actually fall within the remit of the Strategy and Resources Committee as well. So in September, we'll be taking a further update on our progress around the process of apology-making to that committee, so we'll also be reporting on that in public too. Couple of other reflections and some of this actually we've picked up in the previous items that have been discussed on today's agenda. I think the work that we're doing on customer, customer experience and new customer experience strategy and particularly our work around complaints is really important part of the context of this. It's still in its infancy, so I'm currently working with the Director of Customer and Communities at the moment to support recruitment into those new roles and that will directly support capacity and council-wide coordination. But I think it's useful to draw the parallel to that particular piece of improvement work that we're undertaking. And then I'm very conscious, having had feedback from, from the complainants who have had the opportunity to feed a little bit back in relation to the action plan, that the action plan doesn't actually address the reflections and observations, it's very much about the recommendations made. So I just wanted to take a moment of your time, if I may, to just reflect on information management, which was one of the reflections in the report. So, I think it would be fair to say that information management's come up as a theme, it came up in this report and it came up, I think, in the Broad Street Tree Inquiry as well. Our approach to improving information management has been set out in our digital strategy. There's four pillars in that digital strategy. One is around knowledge and data management and the second, and another's about skilled and capable workforce. So, information management specifically, and that's different to the information governance that David's team leads, which sits within legal services, is a required council-wide capability and we're supporting this in several ways. So just, again, it's not an action plan point, but I think it's useful context for the committee. So, since we've started the work on the digital strategy, data and information management, we have designated a chief data officer at assistant director level. Their job is to ensure robust council-wide strategy around data and information management. It's not to be led by technology, it's to be led by business and customer outcomes. As part of the digital transformation programme, we've also got a data architect working with us on how we collect, hold, manage and access information and data more effectively as well. We have implemented a new customer relationship management system and that helps to join up records and management of complaints as well, so there's further work happening in that space. And there are options around case management support for members as part of that work as well. My colleague, Jo, mentioned this earlier, but we've also entered into a partnership with Metaverse and we have over a hundred data apprenticeships live in the organisation as well, recognising the importance of data and information management. And lastly, again, picked up in the last item, but we're implementing a new approach to IT and HR, which means that we've got much better employee data as well. And last thing I'll say on information management and then I'll stop my presentation and happily answer any questions. We're also piloting specific projects on information management and that includes the HR and finance data that Philip talked a little bit about earlier. We're doing work on customers and a single approach and understanding of debt and then we're looking at work such as property and assets registers, contract registers and they're all part of the Future Sheffield Programme. I wanted to put that on record here because it's not included directly within the action plan as it's picked up in other places, but in response to feedback, I thought it would be useful, useful context for everybody. I set out the action plan in the appendix of the document, so I won't go through it in detail, but I'm really happy to answer any questions, as is David. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Chapman? Yes, thank you. You've been talking about what you're doing. When I read through this, there was a recommendation that you had some procedure templates to work from and that all new complaints, people pick it up and work through all these questions. Is that part of the case management that you're talking about? Because really, having something like that, a template that people can work through, tick boxes and make sure everything's considered, is probably a way forward.
Thank you, councillor Chapman. It's not part of the case management specifically, but it is a recommendation we've accepted and we will develop some templates there specifically around ensuring that when the legal team take advice, and David might want to come in on this, that they've gone through a full understanding about what advice they're giving, why they're giving it and not just about whether it's legal, whether it's the right approach to take, which I think is at the heart of the findings from this investigation.
Yeah. David Hollis, General Counsel. That's right, because there's always a different question as to, can we take this legal case to, is this the right thing and will it achieve the outcomes of the council of trying to achieve by taking that legal case? And those two may have a different answer. And it's important that when we're getting external advice, that that is part of the consideration as well. And that's about understanding what the outcomes of the council want are and also understanding what the overarching achievements and the objectives of the council are. And so it's about ensuring that those are considered and that those external advising are aware of those and can take those into the context. It's not about substituting what the council's trying to achieve and getting somebody else to answer that.
Hiya. Just looking at a couple of things. So, the first one was, I noticed it was saying in one, there was a particular document, I don't think it states which one, that we couldn't actually tell what version was which at which point in time. So, are we bringing in some sort of version control to make sure that doesn't happen again? And the second one, and to use 2.2 as an example, how are we storing the data of this? Are we, is it going to say, these were the options that were discussed, we picked this one? How will that be stored and made available for later years?
If I can pick up on the particular issues that we have. So we have case management systems where all of the documents were viewable and visible in the case management system in a logical way and with proper, with proper version controls because we, the tools that we use and the apps we use have version control. The issue we had was extracting the data from the case management system and then sending it over to the firm that were doing the, doing the investigation, in that all of that got lost and what you just ended up with was, well, thousands of documents that didn't have that. So that, so when they're saying that there was, the information was difficult and they had to go through a lot, it's because of the way it was extracted from the case management system and sent over to them. So, within the case management system that we have at the moment, we can see the proper versions.
Okay, I'll rephrase the question then. How do we make sure we can extract it instead of just see it in the future?
Well, and that's one of the things we'd have to pick up when we move to a different, so when we transfer from one case management system to another, it seems to be fine because actually this data was transferred from a previous case management system because it is relatively old data. So, for the council's perspective in using this, then we don't have that issue because the transfer from one case management to a system has been successful. It seems to have been just extracting it and then sending it to a third party that was the issue. If, now we know that, if we come up with that, we'll have to look for a solution. But it's one of those that's not a common issue that we're going to have to come across.
To clarify, David, are you saying that the problem with data extraction was because it was old data that had been transferred to a new system? So, and that's what caused the lack of coding on the data?
That seems to be. There was an element to which we needed to get the data over and it was in an extracted form that we'd sent to the inquiry, so we used it, the same extracted data.
So the system now would enable you to extract the data correctly? Thank you.
Councillor Smith? Did you want to come back?
Other question? The one about 2.2 and how we'd be storing that data. Would it include all decisions discussed?
Yes, so there will be a decision record and that will be stored in the case management system.
Councillor Smith?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to go back to the apologies themselves that were issued. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that not all of the four people have accepted those apologies. And you also referenced that five responses were still outstanding. So, could you just run us through why the council decided to issue a press release on this matter before bringing it to this committee and before getting the feedback from the people to whom you apologised? Thank you.
Thank you for the question, councillor Smith. It's a matter of real regret, the council did not issue a proactive media statement and I think the news article that you're referring to has been picked up from the committee paper. So we, and we weren't approached by the media outlet for comment either. So I'm hugely sorry because that is not the intent of the report. I had hoped that I'd been really clear that the process of apology-making has not yet been completed and it's not been finalised with the four complainants that we're talking about specifically in this investigation report and the nine additional undertakers either. So, just to be really clear, that process is still ongoing and I would hate for anyone in the room or watching to have a sense that somehow the council thinks that it's a one and done letter sent out. That's not the case. That work is still very much underway.
Okay, I'll take that back. That was just a general assumption, but you take the point that however it came about, it doesn't look good again for something that's a really serious matter.
Yeah. Our Head of Communications is going to talk to the relevant media outlet.
Thank you.
Councillor Johnson?
Thanks very much. You quickly answered the first question I was going to ask. It's when I said, when you said the recommendations from VWV had been accepted by the council, I was going to ask, well, who's actually done that? And you said that was he in your particular role, Claire, so thank you for that. And I just wanted to guess, can you update us on where we are with the issue of the apologies? Are you saying that they have been done now to the individuals concerned? Whether accept or not, no one has to accept an apology, but as councillor, we have to make a decision on those.
So, in relation to the four, I'll stick to the four. So, they've all had a draft. One has accepted the apology and that's been issued. One sent back some comments and we've sent a revised apology. The other one, we've got revisions that still need to be considered and the final one hasn't come back with any comments yet.
Thanks, that's helpful. I mean, I just want to reflect, as I've been reflecting in my own mind, about just the scale of this, which I think is actually quite difficult for us, you know, collectively, individually to, just to comprehend. So, just thinking, so this follows on from the Locock Report, which was a, you know, really important piece of work, but that was agreed on over four years ago because of course, remember when we came into the administration in 2021, that was one of the key things to set up. But to reflect on, apparently, I remember because I gave evidence to the Locock Inquiry and the story going back for fifteen years really. And of course, we've had a lot of turnover since then, I mean, a huge amount of turnover and, you know, start off with a paper on the people culture. We're collectively in a very, very different place now from where we were and remember, and it's referred to in the VWV report about the need to just go back and reread the Locock Report periodically because there is a lot, and even for people who were very heavily involved with, you know, free campaign, there's just a lot there that, you know, takes us back to, and some of this is quite encouraging now because you can think actually how badly you can run a council and so, you know, you've always got to be looking on the bright side of how well things are going now. But there is that sort of really long-running saga there and of course, at the centre of it, you know, there are some people, including the four people that we referred to here, who've been really in the thick of this for years and years and years and for whom it's, you know, actually been a very personal toll. And I know that one thing that Sir Matt Locock reflected on was the damage done to a lot of people throughout this whole saga, I mean, obviously the individuals who were caught up and central, but also councils and officers throughout the council who were here for years and the council itself. So, it's, I think we do find that there's just sort of coping with, you know, the scale of that sort of, what was, you know, described as the failure of strategic leadership through and through, possibly also relevant, given that, you know, recent government announcements threatened to sort of bring back that system and get rid of the committee system, which of course came directly out of this and frankly was part of the remedy to try and put Sheffield back on track. But yeah, I just want to sort of bring back to the individuals at the heart of this and, you know, I think we perhaps need to recognise that, as I say, we can't force people to accept apologies and there are of course some things that can't be honed on. I'm not sure if I was going to ask a question there, I'm just reflecting, but, you know, I think it is worth us all going through that process from time to time, but I've said enough now. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, I'm just going to take two more and then we'll come back to you. So, councillor Sango?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Clearly, you know, the Sheffield Trees saga was a deeply sorry state, a situation with the council where the council's political and officer leadership refused to listen to, 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 to listen to objectors and ended up where we are with firstly the Locock Report and now complainants about the legal process and from a corporate reputation point of view, the council is still known for the trees saga and probably will be for the next ten years. So I welcome this piece of work and I welcome the fact that officers have agreed to take on all the recommendations of the external legal advisers. Can you just talk about, so we did want to speak up two points, three points that councillor Johnson's already mentioned. Firstly, it's disappointing that the reports come here when we hadn't cleared it with the complainants. I was hoping that this would be a report where the complaints had been able to see that the recommendation was that we were going to take on board VWV's proposals and that they would have all responded before it came to us. That would be firstly. The second thing is in terms of recommendation three on page ninety and just, I still don't get what happens when the problem is the corporate legal leadership because it's one thing when the problem is the court, is the council's political leadership because that's what we as other politicians are able to say. politicians are able to say, well, we can challenge that politically, but when officers get things wrong and, you know, this is not about when the chief executive is part of the problem, this is when the chief legal officer is a part of the problem. It's understanding how these recommendations will apply in another situation because so often, the chief legal officer and the chief executive have already bought into the strategy, including the legal strategy by the time they meet and it's understanding what the level of challenge is and whether this recommendation goes far enough in certain, so that's the question. Because this is not the first time the council has had this problem. If we go back to, you know, Chadwick versus Sheffield Council in 84, that was a problem where the chief executive, the chief legal officer gave advice to the chair of finance committee and we had to take, we as a political party had to take the council to court. Here, the people of Sheffield, if these complaints have taken the council to court and the courts found against us. So, the chief legal officer and the chief executive are not always right and it's understanding, does these recommendations go far enough in your opinion to make sure that the chance of something like that happening again is much, much lower? And, you know, are our external advisers, is that as far as they think we can go or are there any additional recommendations that we can put in to provide challenge when a campaign group is really not happy with the legal advice and the legal actions of the council, not just the policy actions, but the actions in law? And given the way in this country, if you take on an organisation, the legal costs of you as an individual are very high and, you know, individuals were facing half a million, million pound legal costs and that's the challenge in this country. So, are you happy with these recommendations? Do they go as far as you think they can do and what are the chances of something like this coming up in the next 20, 25 years?
councillor Phipps?
So, there's a couple of questions.
A couple of reflections. So, we did send the action plan to the four complainants ahead of this committee and I'm super happy to add things to the action plan, should be living documents anyway, so I'm always very happy to take further reflections and add them as we need to. I'm going to ask David to come in on some of the broader points around how do we know that we're making the right choices and what happens if some of the statutory officers are getting it wrong. What I'd say is the recommendations set in here should also be seen as part of a broader piece of work that we've been doing around corporate governance. So, we have refreshed completely our internal governance structures. David and I co-chair a corporate assurance board, we've reimagined our risk management approaches, we have statutory officers which includes the 151 officer meeting with the chief executive as well. So, there's quite a lot of additional work. I've added a lot of the tense checking of that to the annual audit plan and I work very closely with the head of audit to make sure that we're getting internal assurance on that, including training and support for our head of audit too. We're leaning in much more to companies that we work with, say, Zurich Care insurers, people like that, to make sure we've got really good check and challenge and robust kind of development support for senior managers in the organisation. So, I think it would be, like, these recommendations alone don't fix a culture, don't make a culture. It is a much broader part of a series of things and interventions that we're doing, which is about openness, transparency and good governance. And what I'd hope, and one of the reasons why I added to this the self-assessment against the LGA scheme, is also it gives us an opportunity, if we wish to, bring in peer reviewers to actually check that and balance it for us too. David, did you want to pick up on specific advice?
Yes. So, if the chief legal officer gets it wrong, then there are plenty of checks to that because actually, it goes back to what I was saying before, actually there's, whether you're right in law or whether it's the right thing to do. And actually, I and any chief legal officer will involve other colleagues in that discussion about whether it's the right thing to do. And it's important to note that we've moved much further on than we used to be about the involvement of the monitoring officer in the senior leadership of the council and as a member of the strategy leadership team and strategy leadership board, but also now with the regular, what's referred to as the golden triangle group of statutory officers. That's the forum to be able to discuss those and get those different voices in and it's not just the section 151 officer and the head of paid service and the monitoring officer. Claire, as the chief operating officer also joins us in some of those meetings so we can have another look at whether we think we're doing the right thing. But it's about the general involvement and the general discussion about understanding what the council's trying to achieve so that you're not going out on a tangent and looking at interesting legal cases, but always setting that in the perspective of what's right for this organisation. I think there is a useful new guidance out from the solicitors' regulation authority that they've given some guidance now for in-house solicitors, which is very much about understanding the organisation that you work for because you are in a privileged position, not only of being the lawyer, but also of being an employee and having that duty as an employee to that organisation. So, you should always be thinking of your duty as an employee as well as advising in a technical sense on the law. And that's one of the things that I've started to emphasise with the legal team. So, I do think it's the right thing and I do think that there's much less risk than there was before.
So, can we clear, so why do you think there is much less risk in terms of, I was really thinking particularly in terms of the wider LGA perspective on this and where the council works with our peers and works with other organisations? Or is it just that you think that the current golden triangle is working and, you know, so that'll be my first question. But the other question I did want to pick up on and get your response to was councillor Johnson's point of view because, you know, the current government and a future government could clearly say, you know, the committee system has to go and we have to go back to, you know, either cabinet system or an elected mayor system or the city manager system. If you remember, that was the option the Blair government gave at this council in 99. Those are the three options. I still believe the cabinet scrutiny was the least worst of the three governments model. And the future government could move us to a model which is much less, you know, committee based, much less corporate and therefore we have to rely on that the officer system is getting all the information, is looking at comparative authorities and I'm still very concerned that we are saying we're better at the moment because currently we're now over control, currently we're committee and both of those things are very temporal and could change at a, you know, a moment's notice with government dictate.
I don't think it is the fact that we're now over control or the fact that we're in a committee system that underpins the changes that have taken place throughout the organisation and particularly in the leadership of, the leadership of officers and the way that we engage, A, with each other, but B, with elected members, whatever system that would be in, I think that has fundamentally changed from the way it was before.
councillor Phipps?
Thank you Chair. Thanks for the report. It's good to see, so, well, it's not good to see the complaints, but it's good to see the recommendations have been accepted from the VWV response. And yeah, it's interesting that VWV report seems pretty clear to me that the council should not have taken injunctive action against residents on page 61.14, who were just simply trying to stop trees being unnecessarily felled by the council and their neighbourhoods and communities. On similar lines to Douglas, I think there's reflection here to be had and not just for officers and processes, which I think has been quite well covered in the recommendations of the response, but also for us as elected members. One of the main themes from the report to me comes through is just because you can doesn't mean you should. So, yeah, I think it's good to see recommendations around legal questioning instructions when they come forward going forward. But I think also we need to reflect when we ask legal in our capacity as members, whether it's committee or whatever, to act, whether that is the right thing to do or whether we're just doing something because we can. I'm just reflecting at the time, there was lots of talk from the leader and cabinet system about some kind of separation between politics and legal, I think that was mentioned quite a lot in full councils. But when it came to the judge actually making a decision on whether the injunction, like injunctive action should be pursued, actually the leader of the council was contacted to see if that was the will of the council. So, I think, yeah, and she said yes. So, I think there's learning to be had there and for reference, I think in a committee system and under no overall control, you're much likely, less likely to get a response saying yes, go on doing junk of action because there's more people around the table and that is kind of the whole purpose of a committee system.
Just a quick question on what are the next steps involving this committee here? So, I'm noticing things are saying this will be codified by the end of August, September. Are we, is it coming back here at some point after that? If so, when?
We will give regular updates. We've said that we'll come at least six months, but we'll bring updates before that if we think there's something that needs to be brought here.
councillor Dodd?
Sorry, I wasn't going to come in on this item as I've just spoken consistently in the previous item, but just on that point and taking a leaf out of Douglas's book, can we add a recommendation to add this to our work plan then for six months' time as I don't think it's currently on there? Thanks.
Yeah, we can do that, we can add it to the work programme. Is there any further questions or comments? councillor Johnson?
Yeah, trying not to speak at length like I did before, just two brief points. I mean, councillor Sango's point about, you know, the risk to the organisation, which is always really, really important for council, well, is actually, there's more of us around the table to keep eyes on what goes on now. And obviously, if we had a legal officer now, sitting in David's position, we'd all be able to tell him what we thought about such proposed actions. And so, the serious point is that is a genuine, you know, risk mitigation issue. And secondly, just to tie this in, I'm aware, so the other outstanding task from this very long running thing is the plaque that is due to go on the front of this building next to the Kinder Scout plaque. And I understand that other committees have got briefings coming up, but I wonder if it might be sensible to sort of tie in an update on that with this so we see that rounded picture when it comes back in whatever time it is.
I'm not sure, I know the plaque is progressing, I'm not involved in that, so we can find out where we're at on that one.
There isn't any final questions or comments? Did you want to make a comment?
Thank you. Thanks very much for giving me the opportunity. I'm one of the complainants. Just a fairly small but significant thing, the VWV report refers to a verbal culture within the council and the key decision to take out the injunction proceedings was not recorded as a key decision and was made without records. Can we be assured that there is more of a written culture now in the council and that such key decisions could not be made by one individual behind closed doors? Thank you.
Thank you very much. I mean, David and Claire, one of my questions for under the recommendations, the recommendation for instructions to council, one of the questions I had was templates help, but who checks they're being used properly? So, it needs a clearer step for documenting why decisions were made if advice was ignored or misused. So, I think that recommendation for can just be made a little bit more strongly and I agree with what you said about making sure that we're able to document decisions rather than just doing a word.
So, I think, just to be clear, so we don't have the concept of key decisions, they're a concept that you have when you've got an executive system and they are decisions that you need to give advance notice of and publish the fact that you're going to take them. This one wasn't taken as a key decision, but it was fully recorded, so it wasn't a verbal thing. So, there was fully documented the reasons for taking the legal action in a documented form, it just was not notified in advance and was not published because, and that would have been the key decision requirement, so that will be the same. Yes, so making sure that we, and again, there was no suggestion here that advice was ignored. I think what we have to remember is, is that this decision wasn't taken in isolation, it was a culmination of a lot of things that had gone and was taken under the strategy that the council was pursuing at the time. You know, those who say, you know, who said go back to Lowcoch, I think you need to understand everything before to understand where you got to in this. And I think that's what these recommendations are aimed at changing so that you don't end up getting to that situation in the future.
But on the point more broadly about a verbal culture, I think the work that we've been doing around changing how we meet, how we record our risk registers, the types of information that we're sharing is better. I think you can begin to see that work coming through with our revised forms outcomes framework with the work that we're doing around the corporate assurance board, around how we're much more rigorous about tracking audit recommendations, for example. So, it should be seen in that much broader context, but absolutely, there's a really clear internal governance structure around recording of advice making and decision making, whether that's about a programme in relation to IT or whether that's about a strategy that's being developed and then which committee it goes to as well. And we've done quite a lot of work on that and we, as part of this, and again, it's not, this isn't a comprehensive document of everything we're doing to improve our corporate governance, but one of the pieces of work, one of the things we've recognised as well is the capacity and capability and the right management accountability for that as well. So, we've brought in a new post within our establishment to assist the director for democracy elections and governance, with a particular focus on making sure that our decision making and our governance is managed in the organisation as well. So, we're looking at how we organise ourselves to embed that way of working. And with your indulgence Chair, just one last reflection, really conscious that an action plan feels really processy and it could be read in that way. And I was really keen that this came alongside the, I appreciate it wasn't adopted, but the people and culture strategy. Jane English has done a lot of work to reposition HR as a people and culture service and we are doing a lot of work on lessons learned. We use things like the cultural web model in the work that we're doing around equal pay, for example, to really understand how the rules and the governance that we use in the organisation contributes to its culture. And that's one of the key elements within the LGA peer review framework as well. So, we're using that quite mindfully in the work that we're doing and I'll be looking forward to taking that self-assessment to audit committee later in the year. Thank you. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much David and Claire for the report and thank you everybody for the discussions here today. The findings of this report cannot be left on a shelf, they demand action, reflection and commitment to change, not just in words, but in culture, systems and leadership. We owe it to the four complainants and to the further nine Sheffield citizens and to the wider public to ensure that what happened during the Street Trees dispute is never repeated. That means learning the lessons with humility and purpose. Thank you very much. This report does come with recommendations for approval, do we all agree? Yeah, that's agreed. Yeah, with the condition that it's on the work programme. Thank you very much. Moving on to page 105 of the agenda pack and this is the capital approvals for month two and over to Damian. Can I just ask, do people want a five minute break? Because I know it's been a bit intense, yeah? Okay, so if we, five minutes, yeah? We'll have a quick five minute break if people want to get some water. This is on page 105 of the agenda pack. I'm really conscious of time now, so after Damian's done his presenting, I'll ask people to ask their questions in threes and then you can respond back to that. Thank you Damian, over to you.
Yeah, I'm Damian Muckson, I'm the finance manager in the capital team, presenting, as Chair said, the various to the capital programme that have come forward this month. Run through them in committee area order as usual, 142k. Hundred and forty-two K for feasibility works for improved walking and cycling crossing of the Ring Road at Bridge Houses. Part of the city region Sustainable Transport Settlement. Delivery will be in a later phase of this funding, so we will only be looking at feasibility within this current stage. Twenty-five K to be put into a citywide twenty mile an hour measures business unit. This is a contingency budget. We've got the overall programme being delivered area by area for twenty mile an hours zones. This is to put some money aside for where members and members of the public request any additional signing and lining to improve those areas. So it's just providing some funding there to be able to do that without having to return to request additional funds each time. We're looking at putting twenty K in for feasibility works for the next tranche of on-street cycle hangars or on-street cycle parking, which was trialled through Crooks and Walkley successfully. So this is twenty K to look at where and how to site the next tranche of those. We're looking at putting forty-six K of local neighbourhood transport funding into some minor interventions to improve the cycle network. And they're listed within the, the write-up for that particular item. We're adding eighty-nine K of city region Sustainable Transport funding that's been secured to add to the feasibility works for phase two of the Sheaf Valley cycle route. So that's filling in the gaps between Norton Hammer and Pons Forge. The overall scheme is going to be delivered as part of the City Centre Connections Sustainable Transport Scheme, which consists of five elements, which we've just got development funding for at the moment, but will be delivered once the final business case has gone into the city region to bring in the full eight million for the overall programme. Linked to the cycle improvements I mentioned earlier, basically we're splitting out some funds. We had a rolling programme of cycle support infrastructure work that went on. And it had been running since 2017 and it was getting a bit difficult to manage to be clear about what was being delivered under each section. So we're, we're taking the thirty-three K out that had been part of the rolling programme. And that forms part of the forty-six that I mentioned earlier. And we're going to get people to bring those forward in batches so we can be really clear about what's being delivered under each one. We're adding funds in, two hundred and two K to the school advisory twenty mile an hour limits to put a further thirteen school sites within that programme. And that's, they're listed, like I say, in the papers. And that's going to be funded from the Road Safety Fund and partly from Clean Air Zone revenue funds that have been generated. Bringing forward a reduction on the development work at the townhead Leopold Street, part of City Centre Connections that I mentioned earlier. It's just a reallocation of some of those development funds. When we've got the full grant agreement from the city region, we're just realigning those funds. So we're reducing that to six hundred and twenty-seven K. Part of that hundred and twenty-seven is, is going to those, the Sheaf Valley cycle route that I mentioned there earlier to increase the amount of feasibility funding we'll be able to spend there. Parkwood Spring Access Road. So last month we brought forward the concert, the approval of concept design around four hundred and five K. This is approval of further eleven point six K, eleven point six million, sorry, of levelling up funding to give a total budget of twelve million. This is to move from concept design to detailed design and the budget for delivery, assuming that the stage two detailed design, it all comes back within budget. There's still a number of risks and dependencies that I've outlined in the report on this scheme, but it's important that we keep momentum on this if we're going to meet the levelling up funding deadline of March 2028 to get through the spend and, and get that delivered. Transforming Cities Fund, the Downlattic Cliff to City Centre link. Bring forward an increase of three point six million to a total of six point four. This is an initial phase to allow for placing of the orders for the statutory undertakers. So the water, utilities, gas, broadband, et cetera, to make their diversions. We've just had the full budget approved, well, so the full funding approved from the city region. That's going to be in the region of twenty-seven point five million for the overall scheme. And I'd expect to see the full budget approval for the delivery of the scheme on top of the statutory works to come forward in the next few months. And under community parks and leisure, we're looking to make a grant of nineteen point five K to Sheffield General Cemetery Trust to match funds, some fundraising they've done with Historic England to address repairs to the gatehouse roof. We're looking at feasibility works for planned improvements at Stannington and Carton Old Parks. We are moving to the delivery phase of the Riving Valley Public Rights of Way reinstatements. So we're moving to a total budget of four hundred and seventy-eight K for this. A number of crossing points on the Riving Valley Route have been affected by storms. There were seven in total areas. The budget that's available is going to allow us to deliver three of those because there were other works that need to take place around wares and other structural items before the, the actual public rights away item, repairs could be made. So there is going to be more consultation work about how the remainder of that is to be funded. Mount Pleasant Park, we're moving from feasibility to delivery stage for the improvement of the parks there. Funded, two hundred and eighty-four K funded from public health funding and Section 106 agreements that are relevant to the area. The Species Survival Programme that has been ongoing. There's sixteen K going in to allow us to progress works at Richmond Park with footpath there and the car park at Shirebrook Valley. With the issue, Osgood Pavilion was due to have some youth investment funding, but due to fires at the site, that building's not in a position to be refurbished any longer. So unfortunately, that project is not going to progress and that's been brought out of the programme. Moving on to housing, we have an increase of five point three million to a total of eighteen point five to deliver external insulation works to the ninety-one remaining area properties. For the termination of the original contract to deliver those works required us to source a new contractor and due to inflation and most likely underpricing by the original contractor, we've had this increase in costs in order to finalise the works to those properties. On the Elemental and Void Programme, which relates to kitchens, bathrooms and repairs to void properties, we've just got a few movements between a historic contract that we had. The final cost came in higher than we'd originally estimated. So we're reallocating four hundred and eighty-four K from the new contract that's in place for around thirty million. But we're just going to reduce the budget on that in order to be able to make the final payment to the original contractor. No overall change to the size of the H R A budget for that. Under single step, a single staircase tablet expires by a safe date. We're adding on sixty K on to a total budget of eleven point seven million to address some final works where access has been an issue and has resulted in increased costs. The Gleedless Valley Master Plan, we're reducing the contribution to capital for that scheme to free up six hundred and eighty, eight, six hundred and thirty-eight K to revenue to support the revenue costs of the master plan development. Bow Hills, we're building thirty-six new one-bedroom flats. We've seen an increase of eight hundred K on the cost of that due to building regulation changes, additional groundwork and an extension to the programme. That eight hundred K will be drawn down from the current contingency within the overall stock increase programme, which is currently nineteen million. So it is affordable within the current funding envelope. And then we have Firth Park Clock Tower. There's been issues with cracking at that site. And this is initial phase of works to address drainage issues as phase one of stabilisation works before later on, we'll bring in a, a business case for more remedial works to sort the building out, reduce the cracking and stabilise it completely. And I think apart from the details of the grant to the Sheffield General Cemetery Trust, those are the items brought forward for approval today.
Thank you, Damian. Councillor Chapman?
Yes, thanks, David. A couple of points.
Yes, thank you. Cheers, Martin. On the pages one, one, two probably to one, one, six. Lots of money being spent on the actual active travel schemes, all on cycling. Do we measure cycling? We've spent an awful lot of money. And how, I've not seen many more cycles around the city as I'm driving around. And I wondered whether we knew we'd spent all this money for just a few people. Because it seems to me that the elderly, the disabled, young families who can't, or people who can't afford a cycle are getting missed out in the active travel. All the money has been spent on cycling and we need to know that it's been worthwhile. And my second question is on page one, two, nine, and area homes. An increase of five point three million. What is the difference with this in increase? Is it because we obviously took the cheaper contract to start with? How much difference was the contract and how much difference is inflation?
Councillor Smith?
Thank you, Chair. Sorry about that. Two questions, one very specific on page one, one, seven. The temporary twenty mile an hour speed limits? Excellent idea. What's the implementation programme for those? So how long, is there a sequence you're going to do them? How long is it going to get to, to get them in there? Because it's a cracking idea. For the sake of brevity, Chair, I'll leave my second question for now.
Thank you, Councillor Sangha.
Thank you, Chair. Page one, one, nine, Parkwood Springs. Except that building a new road is always going to be expensive. But just in terms of that, that fourth risk, lack of detailed information on existing utilities and a culverted water course. What has been the, the learning points in terms of Fargate? In terms of the Fargate scheme, we had to reduce the original scope. I'm just hoping that there's no, that they, that we're not going to have the same sort of problems with, with the schemes that we had. We had Fargate in terms of increasing in cost because of our, not understanding where the utilities were and the potential for a similar problem this time. And clearly, we want to deliver the, the original scope in terms of this levelling up scheme rather than cutting it back to. And it sounds like, once again, we don't necessarily know what we're going to find until we get there. Thanks, Chair.
Right, I'm, well, I will say on cycling ones, I've got a couple of colleagues who are going to help me answer a couple of the questions as well. On cycling, I know that there are cycle counters because we have reference to those in a number of the business cases. So I can ask my colleagues in transport to, to get feedback on that. I believe, I believe as part of the measures for the introduction, these measures in terms of getting funding from the city region, there is reference to an expected increase in journeys. So that, I, I believe that is, is captured, but I can get you some more detail on that in terms of those. In terms of the implementation for the schools schemes, again, I can go back to the office in question. But phase one, I believe, has been completed. So there were seven sites that were done. But I can get a timescale on those and I'll get that fed back. In terms of the changes on the area homes, Dean, would you?
Hello, everybody. I'm Dean Butworth. I'm the Assistant Director of Neighbourhoods in the Housing Department. In relation to the, the area homes, the original contract evaluation was sixty percent cost, forty percent qualitative value. We did the due diligence on that particular contract and with it being a national organisation, everything came back above board in relation to the allocation of that contract. I think what was very clear from the start of the process that they were struggling to deliver to the specification that had been agreed for the cost that had been agreed. So through negotiation with our legal team, we agreed to end the contract. But they've got to complete the twenty-two properties that they're dealing with. As there were only two contractors that bid for this piece of work in the first place, we went back to the second contractor in the supply chain. And the increase of the five point three is really due to the inflationary cost increase of construction at this time? Just inflationary cost, yes? And we go to Parkwood.
Hiya. I'm Alan Seasman, interim head of regeneration. Well, the question on Parkwood, a very brief answer. I'm going to take that back and ask colleagues about that. I think it's a good point and we do need to make that learning. So I'll take that back and give you a proper answer to make sure that we've learned our lesson.
Damian, when you do your written replies back to members' questions, can you include everyone into them, please?
Yeah, so in, in future, all, yeah, all responses that I do, right, I'll copy into all members. Yeah, yeah, no problem at all.
Thank you very much. Councillor Johnson?
Thanks. I just wanted to register some serious concern actually that Councillor Chapman's driving around without seeing cyclists. That sounds very dangerous. And precisely why we need more road safety measures. The serious point is actually, Dem has already answered the question that, yeah, there are counters for that. But actually, what is important is, and so was our regular use of the Sheaf Valley cycle scheme, which I don't think I quite have to declare an interest into the public road. That, yeah, there's been a visible increase in the number of people using it. And that's, that's where you see the, the worst effect. But it's, it's actually not just the number of people using it. It's just you see a different demographic. And this is why it's important and it's, you can't say it too often, that you have this, it's not just sweaty men in lycra anymore. It's, there's a lot of bigger increase in the number of children using it, women riding bikes. And that sort of inroad into equality is really important. As are the cycle hangars. And I know I've heard quite a lot about this from my colleagues in Glades Valley where they've been promoting this. But actually, it's all about access to enable people to have bikes instead of cars when they're otherwise restricted, often in quite small houses. So that these are really important things to try and break the back of some of the sort of structural inequality in the city. It's probably all in it now. I was going to say something about the area homes, but fortunately, Dean Butworth has given us a proper answer.
Thank you. Councillor Dodd?
Thanks. And I'm on the C P L section of this very helpful briefing. Thanks again, Damian. And actually, thank you for your continuous response to our feedback. I, I note that these documents evolve every month and I'm really grateful that you've taken aboard lots of the suggestions that we come up with in this committee this month, including the hyperlinked documents where, where available, which has been really useful. One that wasn't hyperlinked and which I have struggled to find is the Green and Open Spaces Improvement Planning and Investment Briefing Paper that seems to be the background document to a number of the items that are raised within C P L. I looked back at the agenda item for September twenty-four and it's not listed. I spoke to the Deputy Chair of C P L, who doesn't recall it, and I've Googled it and I've come up with nothing. And I've raised this as part of an ongoing conversation that hopefully we'll now be able to have in the C P L briefing that's been scheduled for September, that it's very unclear to me what the strategic decision making is that is driving our allocation of capital into specific green and open spaces across the city. In our capital's strategy, there were very few specific investments mentioned. There's lots of large categories of types of investment that we make within this area. But month by month, we're asked to approve feasibilities and then delivery of some very specific green and open space plans. But it seems to be quite sporadic and sometimes based on councillor effort, sometimes based on community demand, sometimes based on, you know, something else entirely. And I, I'm yet to see a, a kind of coherent strategy for, for what, how are we prioritising? Which of our parks across the city are getting the kind of valuable resources that we've got? And, and for the sake of brevity, if I tie in a secondary question, which is specific to the proposal for Mount Pleasant Park, which sounds like a great initiative, but that's getting two hundred and twenty-two thousand of public health funding. Out of a total of how much public health funding and what does that mean for any other parks that might be entitled to public health funding across the city that are also in need of support for that? What, what remains? What's the kind of opportunity cost for that? Thanks.
Yeah, the documentary question was a briefing, it's a briefing document rather than a decision document to a council, to, to the committee itself. So it was a briefing, not, so it wasn't a public document, so it wouldn't be found. I did circulate that document to members of this committee because I got it a couple of months ago from Stuart Turner, who's the officer, who's one of the officers in parks because I asked for that. And so I, that document, I, I've circulated it round to all members of this committee a couple of months ago. Because it was one of the things that I know you'd requested specifically, so I asked for it. And that is the most recent one. I know they're working on an updated version. And it's a reasonably comprehensive document that does spell out how they're intending to deliver those works. But I can send that round again.
That would be really helpful.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I'd say there'll be an updated version of that, which hopefully will be able to be discussed, the, the joint briefing in December. So I will send, resend that document, like I said, that was a briefing document rather than a published document for discussion at a full committee meeting. But it was the closest thing I've got to a strategic document that gave me, gave you that information. So, yeah, I'll send that round again.
Sorry, I was just thinking, and on the public health point?
Yeah, I believe I'll relook at that document, but I think the decisions around the allocation of that are part of that document. I can't remember off the top of my head, but I will double check because the public health funding is actually revenue funded and there's decisions made to transfer certain amounts. So, you know, there's decisions. So you know, there's decisions made around how to utilise the public health funding and where they decide to use it on public and open space and that's capital funding. It's just sort of transferred across to capital reserves, if you like. So the decision making around public health funding is not specifically around capital, it's more around the overall use of public health funding, because it comes in as revenue. So I'll see what I can, see what other decisions I can find around that.
Thank you Damien, there is there any further questions or comments? We do have a briefing in September, I believe, on the park strategy and I think councillor Dodd's questions are relevant when we are being asked to approve, we just need to understand where these decisions were made and how they were made and where the funding is coming from. Okay, so this report does contain recommendations for approval, are we all agreed? Yeah, that's agreed, thank you very much. Moving on to the next item, which is on page 147, and this is item 11, medium term financial strategy. If officers can just introduce themselves before they start please.
Thank you Chair, I'm Philip Gregory, Director of Finance Commercial and Performance Services, I'm the council section 151 officer.
Good afternoon, my name's Catherine Mills and I'm the Assistant Director of Transformation and the Lead on Future Sheffield.
Good afternoon, Kerry Dallo, Assistant Director of Finance Business Partnering.
So Catherine and I will introduce this report for the committee, which combines what might have been two reports, but which have been brought together to provide you with a comprehensive update on the future direction of the council. The council here is ambitious and we want to become the kind of organisation that truly delivers for the people and the businesses of Sheffield, with a growing emphasis on enabling early prevention and intervention, particularly in our most disadvantaged communities, to prevent challenges occurring rather than responding once they've happened. The council faces a number of challenges over the next four years, which is the period of time covered by this medium term financial strategy. The council has been proactive in responding to these challenges, which aren't just financial, choosing to be bold in our ambition to deliver for the city. Future Sheffield is an ambitious and extensive transformation programme, planned to deliver outcomes over three years from 2627. In preparation for the delivery of this change, a target operating model for the council has been developed. This is the blueprint that sets out how the council will operate to deliver against the council plan outcomes. It ensures that all the services within the council are fully aligned to the strategic aims that we've been agreed in the council plan and provides opportunities to identify how we become the council we want to be, with people at its heart providing consistent, modern and high quality services that our city deserves. So Future Sheffield is our most coordinated and intentional approach yet to how the council can work differently, reshaping how we operate and redefining how our services will look and feel in years ahead.
Thank you Philip. So in the paper, there are two detailed updates on Future Sheffield. Appendix three is a detailed progress report, which we discussed at length in Strategy and Resources Committee on 10th of July, so I don't tend to go through that in detail, but fully welcome any questions this committee may have and would welcome the chance to answer that. But for this committee, I'm going to concentrate more on Appendix two, which outlines the work that we've done in Future Sheffield to identify the savings that align to the medium term financial strategy and the ways in which these could be released. However, before I do that, I do think it is important to articulate that Future Sheffield is more than just about creating a financially sustainable council. Through our aim, through the implementation of the target operating model, is that we will work in a more cross council way to best pool resources and capabilities to deliver services as opposed to working in siloed ways across directorates, to be more digitally enabled throughout, from customer first experiences online to how, through to how our internal teams support frontline delivery using technology. Enable a more consistent experience of all stages of our customer or staff's journey getting support from the council. This will be through clearer understanding of service offerings and simplified processes across all layers of our target operating model. And ensure there is more emphasis on prevention and early intervention. How can we look at prevent problems from happening in the first place rather than responding once they have happened? Back in November, Future Sheffield reported to Strategy and Resources to give an update and since that point, we have now identified and scoped 11 transformation programmes across the four layers of the operating model. Each programme has a clear purpose aligned with the operating model and will articulate how the organisation will be different. All our programmes have now been scoped to include financial and non-financial benefits and impacts, which we will then track and monitor going forward. So although last year in 2425 was predominantly our year of discovery and design, with only customer experience and digital scope to moving into delivery, we did still achieve a number of key achievements, such as some of the community engagement we have done for the community strategy. By working in the housing services and by helping to reduce housing voids by 300, by 300 properties, and we've seen a 22% decrease in B and B expenditure. We're supporting the development of the family help model in children's services and we've now established a minimum viable standard for the single contract register. In terms of digital, we've introduced 150 AI co-pilot licences and with the, we are now expanding those over the next month to 1,000 staff, which we will monitor over the next five months. We've also done a trial of Magic Note AI in adult social care. And although, like I said, it was more about discovery, we did have some small savings in the digital strategy. In the report, in Appendix three, we've talked about saving of 295,000. However, I've worked with business partners in the digital strategy team and this has now been calculated to be over £544,000 realised last year. And we achieved this through improving our contract management of mobile and laptop suppliers and we're expecting further savings from year two of that as well. And that's supported by the introduction of our new mobile phone policy and the reduction in number of devices across the council. A shift to cloud first approach, which has allowed us to rationalise parts of our infrastructure and application estates and bringing some IT services in house, reducing our reliance on third party providers. Our focus now though, is on delivery and implementation. In Appendix three, we've outlined the expected next steps for each of the programmes over the next six months and will continue to report progress against these over the coming months. However, in Appendix two, we focus on Future Sheffield's role in delivering financial savings. In the appendix, we aim to provide the committee with an early understanding of the targets, primarily for Future Sheffield, to support the delivery of financial benefits in line with the MTFS, outline the types of work and changes which could be implemented to release these financial savings, to provide an initial view of the profile of the savings over the medium term financial period and set out what further types of opportunities could be pursued in the support of the identification and delivery of these savings. Through our discovery and planning stages, we have identified potential savings around 44.9 million. These savings have been aligned with the changes to the operating model and profiled over three years. The programmes will identify these savings through our work on service redesign, looking at how we can release vacancies, redesign services with technology, improve our processes and training, adjusting service levels and managing demand through self-service and reduce failure demand. If we take the example of customer experience programme, we can now start to identify savings by bringing together customer support teams, enhancing training and tools, simplifying our online access for customers and reducing unnecessary customer contacts to improve productivity and efficiency. Our work in Future Sheffield will also look at how we can realise further savings by exploring third party spend, renegotiating contracts, addressing shadow spend through centralised procurement, looking at how we can look at income through fees and charges and look at how we benchmark with other authorities and work with finance to look at other identified areas. So I'd like to finish my bit by saying, although we are focusing on the savings, it's important to remember that this is a whole scale transformation of Sheffield City Council. I'll hand over to Philip to talk about the medium term financial strategy.
Thank you. So the medium term financial strategy, or the MTFS, sets out the future financial forecast for the council. The aim is to set out the anticipated changes in budget required to deliver services over the period, combined with an assessment of income, including funding from government and the scope of mitigations required, so that we can set a balanced budget in each of the next four years. So there are some important changes that will have an impact on our MTFS for next year. The most significant of these changes are amendments to the allocation of government funding for the council, and I'll speak about this in two ways. First is the approach the government will take to confirm how much funding we receive beyond a single year, and then the amendments to the way that government calculate how much funding we actually receive. So the first change is the commitment from government to provide a three year funding settlement from next year, from 2627. So this means that instead of the government confirming our funding for just the following financial year, usually in the December before the new financial year starts, the government will provide confirmation of funding for three financial years in November or December this year. This will provide us with a level of certainty in funding for 2627, 2728 and 2829, the same time period we're planning Future Sheffield over. So why is this important? Having this certainty over three years allows us to plan our approach to setting a balanced budget for those three years in a more systematic way. Whilst we still have to form our plan to deliver a balanced budget for 2627 in a similar way to previous years, we will then have the opportunity to plan our approach to the following two years much earlier. This multi-year approach will allow us to review the ebb and flow of demand for our services, the delivery of Future Sheffield, the funding available and the strategic use of our reserves to support those ambitions. The second change is the approach that government propose to take in allocating funding to local authorities across England. So the Ministry for Housing Communities and Local Government, or MHCLG, published their plans in a consultation launched on the 20th of June. The local government sector prepared to implement funding reforms called Fair Funding back in 2019, but these reforms were never implemented. Previous MTFS reports to this committee have highlighted that these, should these reforms have been implemented, the share of funding received by this council to provide services in the city would have been expected to increase. The new set of reforms that have been proposed are called Fair Funding II. These proposals update the works of the original Fair Funding review and propose implementation from 2627. The aim of these reforms are to target funding and resources where they're most needed, as well as taking into account the ability of local authorities to fund their own activity through council tax. The consultation that has been published doesn't include detailed figures for the three years of the funding settlement, but does include the principles that will be used to determine funding and the supporting methodology. So unfortunately, we haven't been able to include the impact of these reforms in this version of the MTFS, as there are significant variances in the change in funding depending on the assumptions that you make and the detailed application of the methodology. It's expected to be a positive change, so an increase in funding for Sheffield City Council, but we can't yet give you a set of numbers. Work is ongoing to model the implication of these reforms on the MTFS as details continue to emerge. And also, this is a consultation from government, so there may be changes as a result of the feedback provided through that consultation. We expect there to be a policy statement from MHCLG around September, which confirms the outcome of the consultation, followed by detailed figures provided by MHCLG in late November or early December. So on page 153 of the report, there were four main areas under consideration for the Fair Funding II reforms. The first of these relates to the approach from government to reduce the number of individual grants into large combined grants, moving towards outcomes based accountability with an end to competitive bidding for grant funding. The second area describes the approach government will take to measuring the demands and needs of each local authority through a number of formulae. Sheffield's allocation of need is 1% of the total funding for local government in England. If you look at that in Rand Order, that's 21st overall. The third area of consultation is what's called a resources adjustment. This is a mechanism where government are aiming to direct funding to places that are less able to meet their needs through increases in council tax, as places like Sheffield. This might also be referred to as council tax equalisation. Fourthly, there will be transitional arrangements in place to phase in the changes in funding over three years to avoid cliff edges of funding reductions for some councils as the changes work their way through the system. In addition to this, there are other considerations that have been factored into the development of the MTFS. There's continued economic uncertainty, which follows this period of heightened inflation and increased demand for many of the services that we provide. In preparing the MTFS, we make assumptions about the future profile of demand for services, for cost pressures on the cost of delivering those services and on factors that might affect our income sources. The underlying assumptions are provided in annexes B and C of this paper from page 175. These detailed assumptions allow us to set the financial envelope for each of the next four years in order to be able to plan our approach to set a balanced budget. The council began to change its approach to budget management last year as we introduced priority based budgeting, which starts to match what we spend to our council plan outcomes. The work of Future Sheffield and the approach to financial delivery of benefits builds on this work. So to some numbers. The overall budget gap reported in the last MTFS update in March was £52.3 million. This was a cumulative total over three years from 2627 to 2829. At this time of year and this stage in the budget setting process, the MTFS is updated and an additional year is included, so that the MTFS now includes a four year period. The addition of the 2930 financial year increases the budget gap by £38.7 million. However, we have included the financial benefits from Future Sheffield within the MTFS, with the result that the budget gap has been reduced by 44.9 million. There's a forecast increase in budget pressures compared to the last MTFS, £35.2 million, as a result of both increased forecast demand for social care services and inflation linked increases in costs. The net result of all of these changes and the changes to those assumptions result in an overall budget gap for, over the four year period of £69.6 million. And further detail is provided in Annex A on page 174. There is a small health warning at this point. The budget gap that we have the most confidence in is the one for next year, for 2627, and there's an increasing level of uncertainty towards the budget gap in 2930, as the economic variables could change significantly over time. So this reinforces the benefit of having a three year funding settlement from government as the level of uncertainty in 2728 and 2829 is reduced once we receive this. And again, we expect to receive figures for all three years in November or December this year. The updated cumulative budget gap of £69.6 million includes known changes in government funding that were confirmed before Fair Funding II was announced. We haven't been able to include the impact of changes from Fair Funding II, although we expect the funding gap will fall as a result of increases to funding. The budget gap for next year, for 2627, is £7.7 million. This is usually the point in the budget setting process that we start business planning for next year. That will be setting the budget gap that services need to deliver against, so that we can set a balanced budget in March. For comparison, at this point in the process last year, the budget gap for 2526 was £31.4 million, so the budget gap for 2627 is much smaller in comparison. There's also further work ongoing to assess potential increases in fees and charges that could be included, as well as the anticipated benefit from Fair Funding II and other benefits through Future Sheffield currently being identified, all of which lead to the conclusion that the route to a balanced budget for next year is through the focused delivery of Future Sheffield. With that in mind, we won't be launching the business planning process as we have in previous years, but will direct all of our attention to delivering the benefits of Future Sheffield. There's been significant effort to get to this point, there's been significant input from members and officers in teams across the council to lead to this position reported to you today. So we have a council plan, we have a blueprint for the future of the organisation to be able to deliver that plan, and we have a transformation programme to adapt, to modernise and to put people at the heart of everything that we do. And this is our plan for financial sustainability. So in conclusion, this report sets out for the committee a number of recommendations to support and note. The next steps to be taken through Future Sheffield to support the delivery of our target operating model, a proactive plan for the financial targets within Future Sheffield programmes that support the delivery of the MTFS, and finally the detail of the MTFS across the four year period from 2627 through to 2930. We'll be happy to take any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I am conscious of the time, we have gone over, so I do need to ask the committee if we can extend for half an hour. We're not going to use half an hour because I know our colleagues need to get away. So is that okay for us to extend? Councillor Smith?
Thank you Chair. Just to be, thank you for the presentations, clearly a lot of work has gone into it and is still going into it. We can't rely 100% on the government bailing us out. And that's not a criticism of the current government. It's like any government at the national level. So we're almost entirely dependent on the Future Sheffield project. And it's great that we've got to about delivering 1% of the savings. But, and forgive me, it's a 200-page document, I may have missed it. When do you currently estimate that we'll be at the £45 million target? Thank you.
There is any further questions?
Okay, great. So the £45 million delivery is over three years. So that's a total delivery over three years from 2627 onwards. Where we can identify savings that we can deliver earlier than that, we will do. But that £45 million total is cumulative over those three years.
Sorry, there was one more question. Councillor Dodd?
Thank you and thank you to the officers for your report. I welcome the three-year funding commitment and the Fair Funding 2.0. It feels very welcome that unlike in previous governments who kind of relish the opportunity to use public spending for electoral gain, this is a shift to a much more evidence-based system. And I welcome that it recognises the considerable need that there is here in Sheffield as the budget gap that we're facing demonstrates. And so it's great to see, albeit that we can't put a number on it yet, that we're feeling optimistic about what that might mean for our future budgeting. I also wanted to just put on record thanks to the Future Sheffield team for the enormous amount of work that it's taken to get us to this point. I think as colleagues have noted, there's a lot riding on this. There's a lot still more to do, but it's really great to see that we're able to be projecting with some confidence that we will be able to meet some of that gap ourselves and to be able to kind of realise the benefits from that programme. My question was just to pick up on what you said at the end there, Philip, about this slight change in the budgeting process that we're going to undertake this year. Great that we're not in a position where we have to be looking to make cuts, but we have made a commitment that we're in a kind of ongoing process of changing the way we work as a council, particularly with a focus on prevention and equity. And so I wondered if you could say something about how we might be thinking about how we move money around the organisation or allocate money differently and what work is going on at an officer level and how members will be involved in that side of the kind of budget setting process absent the cost savings initiatives.
Thank you. So I think the Future Sheffield Member Working Group will be really important in terms of shaping how we deliver this and being able to monitor the proposals that come through in terms of how we deliver against the £45 million target that's been set. In terms of the focus on prevention and equity, as you've said, I think that will come through from the work that's happening within each of those programmes. Each of those programmes is thinking about how we design the structures of the council to be fit for the future. And that will include how we reshape delivery of services to be more preventative. So if we think about, for example, social care services, that's the challenge that we've set to those services. As we think about the service delivery layer within Future Sheffield, part of the challenge and opportunity is both how are you financially sustainable now? But how do we reshape your budgets so that you're financially sustainable in the future and able to deliver against that preventative agenda? Within adults, for example, it's very clear that the earlier we can identify someone who might be in need of services from social care, actually the better it is for the person. They require less care. And actually, that can prevent them from needing intense social care services if we can get to them early. Part of that is using the data that we have about our population and about the people in the city, being able to predict and prevent people from having, for example, a fall at home by being able to identify the cohort of people most at risk. I think part of that is also being able to say, working with our social work teams, that they understand who would most benefit from that preventative work and actually what opportunities exist. So part of the work of Future Sheffield is absolutely to look at where those opportunities exist to redirect our resources into more preventative agenda and way of working rather than reacting to demand as it occurs.
Can I just add to that? I mean, if we think through this, so that's the service delivery layer. We have an empowered communities layer and we're looking at commissioning. So that's community strategy when that's approved in the autumn. It links back to the conversation we had about the people strategy of if you approve that strategy, what does that then mean about the culture and the workforce and the capabilities? So we need to do that work as well. How do we build that work in our communities? Do we build stronger communities when we're looking at prevention? What does that then mean about how we commission? You know, how does that feed into how do we then intelligently commission different services or in different ways? So we enable communities or community groups to actually do some of that work and enable, empower themselves. So it is about looking at our service delivery, but it's also looking about that whole organisation. Future Sheffield is about how do we work as one organisation rather than just thinking through, right, what does adults need to do? Is that how do those different layers of the target operating model actually interact across the organisation?
Thank you. Councillor Johnson?
Thanks. Just a quick note to say enormous thanks to you guys for bringing this together. Actually, it's really exciting that we're sort of, you know, notwithstanding the fact that there's a huge amount of work to do and there's lots of variables there, but to be within touching distance of financial sustainability, that's actually in our sights. And just actually for all of us, the prospect of having a different approach to the whole budget setting process this year is actually a fantastically exciting point in time, I think. And that's really welcome after so many years of cutting this, cutting that. And it's not to say that, you know, completely the end of cuts in things, but if it's about making the right choices, that's so much good. And then finally, just reflecting back on an earlier discussion about the whole legacy of the street trees scandal. It's just a reminder of just how expensive it is to run things badly. So well done again.
Councillor Slater?
Yeah, yeah, thank you very much for this. And again, apologies if I've missed it, so it might have happened. And for once in my life, I'm specifically not asking for numbers because I realise it might not be a good idea to say them. I just wanted to check, is there an assumption in here regarding the equal pay question? And as I say, I don't want specific numbers. I understand why we wouldn't give that out at this point. But I just want to say, is it in there?
Thank you. So there are two financial considerations related to equal pay in our role review programme. One is the historic redress payment that we might make. And then the second is we've committed to evaluate every role in the organisation. As part of that reevaluation, there will be a different pay line and that may cost more, it may cost less. Different roles will be evaluated individually. So the process for role evaluation will take probably two years. That process has just started in terms of people in place to start evaluating roles. The process is that you evaluate all the roles and then you address the pay line. So we won't have a clear view on the actual cost going forward for the organisation, probably for another two years. And once we've reached the end of that role review programme and we've assessed everybody's role and compare them to each other accurately. In terms of the redress payments, those are subject to negotiation. And once we have a number, we will be able to communicate that with you. So then the redress payment will be a one-off payment, which we will manage through our financial resources. You wouldn't expect to see that in the MTFS because it's a one-off cost. It's not an ongoing cost. We have made assumptions around the future cost of our workforce for each year within the assumptions in the MTFS. And that will start to reflect some of those thoughts that we have around the potential cost of the future payroll of the organisation.
Thank you. There is any further comments or questions? Thank you to the Future Sheffield team and our finance colleagues for bringing this report, putting all this together. We will be asking services this year to continue to find savings and work with the Future Sheffield to be able to do that. I welcome the Fair Funding 2. It will address inequalities by investing more in areas of greater needs, but it also gives us a lot more financial stability and also helps with long-term planning, which is absolutely essential for us. There are recommendations to note and for approvals. Are we all approved? Yeah? Thank you very much. That was unanimous. And that's the end of the meeting. The next meeting will be on the 18th of August at 2pm. Thank you very much, colleagues. It's been a long meeting today. Thank you.